Brittany, we're ready. Okay.
February 23rd, city council meeting is called to order. We have our invocation by Pastor Chris Erskine, Bethel Baptist Church Pratt City, followed by our pledge of allegiance by Councilor Valerie Abbott from District Three. Please stand.
Shall we pray? Gracious and loving Father, thank you for life itself, for the measure of health and the supply of our needs. Thank you for sustenance and for friendships. Thank you for the ability to be involved in useful work. In the scriptures, you have said to us that the citizens ought to obey the governing authorities, since you have established those very authorities to promote peace and order and justice. Therefore, I pray for our mayor, for the various levels of city officials, in particular this assembled council, the nine distinct districts that they represent. I'm asking God that you will graciously grant them wisdom to govern over and amid conflicting interests and issues of our times, a sense of welfare and true needs of our people, a keen thirst for justice and righteousness, but most importantly, the ability to work together in harmony even when there is honest disagreement. I pray for the agenda set before them today. Please give them assurance of what would please you and what be beneficial to those who live, work, and in around our beloved city of Birmingham. It is in your most blessed name I pray. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call the roll, Mr. Clerk.
Councilmember Abbott. Councilmember Hoyt. Councilmember Lundey. Councilmember Parker. Good morning, sir. President Protem Roberson.
Present.
Councilmember Rafferty. Councilmember Scales. Morning. Councilmember Tyson. President Austin.
Present. Good morning.
Morning.
The minutes from December 1st, 2015, do we have a motion on those minutes?
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes.
Roberson, Abbott.
Voting started. Councilmember Rafferty, Scales. Yes. Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Lundey, alright, that vote should be up, Mr. President.
That item passes. Next item, Mr. Clerk, the minutes are not ready from December 8th through February 16th, 2016. We do, we want to, I know we have some kids in the audience, some children, we want to go ahead and do those presentations. Let's move to suspend rules for our presentation.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
First presentation, Mr. Protem.
Thank you, Mr. President. I appreciate you moving forward so we can get our young people back to school so they can get their education today.
They're ready to go back.
They're ready to go back?
Yeah.
Okay. I appreciate you, Mr. President. At this time, I want to ask for Coach John London and Assistant Coaches Bridget Clark and Ezra Jordan with Phillips Academy Middle School Girls Basketball Team, please come forward. Ladies and gentlemen, yeah clap, there you go. Alright, go move right along. The Phillips Academy Girls Basketball Team won the cities, and I'm going to ask you all to face the council. Let's turn, there we go. The Phillips Academy Girls Basketball Team won the city's middle school championship with a record of 22 and one. This team was led by Head Coach John London and Assistant Coaches Ezra Jordan and Bridget Clark. I want to congratulate you all ladies for your success on being the middle school champions this year in Birmingham city schools. We're looking forward to seeing you down at the BJCC one day, playing in the final big game down there one day. So congratulations to each and every one of you, and at this time, I'll bring up Coach if you'd like to say a few words, and then we'll present each young lady with a certificate of appreciation. Coach?
Thank you. Give him a hand, give him a hand, yeah, sorry. Just want to say, I want to say thank you to Councilman Roberson and City Council and the mayor for allowing these young ladies to be here. It's just a special privilege to reach back and give back to these young ladies. If you haven't seen them play, I tell you what, they were very exciting. For our eighth graders who are leaving, they had a total record of 44 and two, in the two-year period, the eighth grader that's going on to different high schools. I'm just excited to watch their growth and their future. And for the seventh grader, the challenge is there for them to come back and hopefully we'll see you again next year. Again, thank you for this honor.
And to this great group of young ladies that have achieved great accomplishments on the hardwood, we do have a certificate of appreciation and that we're going to give each and every one of you. I know our mayor, William Bell, is very proud of you and all of our council members that are present here today. And I want to let Coach, you want to do these, let's probably hand these out. Oh man, you're going to make me announce these names. Alright, first would be DeKia Sanders. DeKaya, see there? Congratulations. Kiara Griffin, alright, got that right. Keandrea Childress, right here next to me, congratulations. Tamia Simmons, Tamaya, thank you. Y'all help me out, teamwork, it's all about teamwork. Sanaya Brooks, alright. This might be your relative, Mayor Bell. Amari Bell, alright here, he might be a Bell. He might be related to the Bell. Rhea Griggs. Ree, alright, help me out. Oh Lord. Lantiria. Zanteria, right? See Coach, you should have done that. Nyla Bowler. I can handle this one. Brianna Williams. I got this one. Crystalin Lumsey, congratulations. Tania Bynum. I'm on a streak now. Gabriel Goldsmith. Shanti McNeil, I spoke too soon, Councilwoman. Shanti McNeil, congratulations. And in honor of the accomplishments of this great team and their successes as Birmingham City School Middle School Champions, we want to honor each coach as a coach and more than just a coach. You're a mentor, you're a parent, you're a big brother, a big sister to these young ladies. And at this time, I want to give you the highest honor we can give, a citizen an outstanding citizenship medal. This medal was started years ago by former councilmember Carol Smitherman to honor those citizens that have achieved great goals as citizens in our community. So each coach, I want to present to you at this time, a citizenship medal. Please come forward. I saw you last night. At Lawson. Wilder State, yeah, they play good, too. Ladies and gentlemen, let's give it up for our 2015-2016 Birmingham City School Champions. Got one more, Mr. President, if it's in order. Alrighty. You know, champions are made here in Birmingham, Alabama. And it's an honor to also honor our boys, middle school champions from 2015 and 2016. The Jones Valley Boys Basketball Team won the city's middle school championship with a record of 21 and five. Let's give them a round of applause as they enter. Alright Tyler, good to see you again. This team was led by Head Coach Kenneth Woods and Assistant Coach Jermaine Jackson. These young men have achieved a great accomplishment within our middle school league this year, and I can say this, my son played against this team earlier in the tournament this year, and Trey's team won their championship, and they only had two losses. And one of the losses was this team right here. And this is a great group of young men, and I'm just proud of your achievements and what you're doing and continue these efforts. At this time, Coach Woods, would you come up and say a few words? Coach?
Congratulations. My boys and I, we have a good season this year, and we work on fundamentals real good, and plus we do a good job in the classroom. Thank you.
Congratulations, Coach. And to our mayor and to our President, President Austin, the Birmingham City Council will present to you today certificates of appreciation, and I hope these names are a lot easier than the girls. From Jones Valley, Tyler Battle. Come on up here, point guard. Joshua Burns. Number four. Charles Hill. Right here, Charles. Help me out, Tyler. Javion. Javion Hunter. He's right here. Shelby Pearson. Jaquan Perkins. Alright. Javonte Moore. Alright. He's got some mean post game right here, boy. This boy bad on the post. Man, he can play. Braylon Reese. Montreal Sawyer. Orlando Smith. Now this young man, I'm so proud of, and I think he has a bright future in athletics, and he's a good quarterback in football, but also an outstanding athlete on the basketball court. Emmanuel Talbot, man. Tyler Woods. Alright Tyler, seventh grader. And to our head coach, and in honor of our coaches, it's customary that we give you a citizenship medal, and that's an honor that was started by Councilwoman Carol Smitherman to honor those citizens that have had great achievements. And at this time, I'd like to present a citizenship medal to Kenneth Woods, head coach of the Jones Valley Tigers. Along with his certificate, congratulations, Coach. And also to his assistant coach, and he's not one of the Jackson Five, but his name is Jermaine Jackson, the assistant coach for Jones Valley Tigers. Congratulations. And I want to inspire these young men today because they are in District Seven, and as you all know, We Knowna believes in winning championships. And we believe in rings, and we know them. And I got this ring here for the back-to-back state champions at We Knowna. And I think one day, you all can achieve the same accomplishments with this group, with the type of guys you all are, the chemistry you have as a basketball team. I think the future looks very bright, and I truly believe the next few years will be special, Coach, don't you think? When they get up to the high school, and they'll do great things. So congratulations to the Jones Valley Middle School, state, I mean, not state champions, one-day state champions, middle school champions 2015-2016. Congratulations. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Protem. We have one other presentation. Coach Neighbors and Phillips Academy Boys Basketball Team. There they are. Go ahead, Coach. Oh, go ahead, I'm sorry.
First of all, I'd like to thank God for allowing this to happen. Secondly, our City Council, thank you for introducing us down here. And lastly, the parents, without them, it'd be a tough job for a coach. This year, my team, we was 12-0 undefeated, and we are the Birmingham Elementary School City Champions.
I'm the athletic director. Coach Tyson is the head coach. As you know, this is our fourth team here this year. This is the elementary team. They started this program a few years ago. These boys were excellent this year on the court. Coach did an excellent job. And also, I want to thank our parents, because without our parents, our school is just not in existence. So let's give our parents a hand. On behalf of Milton Hopkins Principal, I'd like to thank you again. Hopefully, we can win the rest of this school year and come back. So we thank you again, and we're looking forward to being back this year. Thank you.
Thank you. Coach, you want to introduce your players before you leave? You want to introduce your players before you leave?
We're going to start off with Caleb White.
And we have, and while we're introducing them, we have the council's highest honor that we can give is a distinguished citizen medal, and Michelle over here, my assistant, will be, yep, so you can give it to the first one. Give him another hand.
And this young man is a third grader, Austin Connors. Mr. Steve Brown. Stefan Washington. This is my little buddy right here. I call him the Ant-Man Nigel. Mr. Jacob Andrews. Quentin Reese. Mr. Ralph Williams. Mr. Terry Connors. Mr. Braxton Urquhart. Josh Costa. Mr. Caleb Thomas. Mr. Jordan Norman. Last and not least, Mr. Chris Harden. And that's it, thank you very much.
And the athletic director. Alright, Council Tyson.
Mr. Neighbors, do y'all remember when y'all rescued the lion, western lion mascot? That's why y'all are winners. That's how I want it. Y'all been taking care of our mascot?
Yeah, it's still in the storage room.
Okay. Y'all hadn't found no one big enough to wear it yet?
Yeah, we got two of them.
Y'all got two of them now? Okay, alright.
Alright, thank you so much. Give him another round of applause. One other thing, we have Mr. Jim Watkins. He's the father and owner of Steel City Pops. It's a gourmet popsicle shop at the summit, if you would, come up. They are good. And he's got his two sons, Jude, who's in the ninth grade, and Trip, who's in the eighth grade. They're with Boy Scouts Troop 533, and I just want to come up and acknowledge them. And they're, well, I'll let them tell what they're doing. Go ahead. Please, just come, look and introduce yourself and your sons and tell us what they're doing.
Sure. Well, thank y'all for having us here this morning. It's a privilege to be here with you, and thank you all for your service to our city. We're very grateful for that. This is my second oldest son, Jude. This is my third oldest son, Trip. And they are here as a part of being in the Boy Scouts and part of getting their citizenship in the community badge. They attend a city council meeting and thought this would be a real exciting one, because I own a business that's here in Birmingham, and this is an issue that's very present for us. And so Councilwoman Rafferty was kind enough to answer some questions for them, and so they wanted to come and be able to take a picture and meet her today and meet all of you. So it's a privilege for hosting us here today, and again, thank you for your service.
Thank you. Young men, you all have anything you want to say?
Thank you, thank you for your service. Thank y'all for having us, and thank y'all for your service as well.
Thank you. That concludes our, the presentation. Mr. Mayor, we going ready for your report?
Yesterday, we were honored to have Congressman John Lewis in town remembering the civil rights era and speaking on how important it is to remind our younger generation of where they've come from and who they are. That being said, as we enter our final week of celebrating Black History Month for 2016, we have the kindergarten class from Phillips Academy to give us a brief presentation, and I want the young people to come forward, and Abigail, tell all your classmates, come on down.
Good morning. My name is Natasha Goss, and I am the kindergarten teacher at Phillips Academy. Today, we're going to present to you two poems that we had to memorize in class as a part of our International Baccalaureate IB standards. And they did an amazing job on memorizing both poems, and they're going to present them to you today along with a couple of songs, okay?
I Am the Child by Maggie Dean Cole. I am the child. All the river waves are my honey. All the earth watches with entrance to see what I shall become. Civilization hangs in balance for what I am, the world tomorrow will be. I am the child. You hold in your hands my destiny. You determine law to me, but I have to see or fail. Heal me, I pray you. These days you may be for happiness. Train me, I beg you, that I may be a blessing to the world.
Hey black child, do you know that you're strong? I mean really strong. Do you know what you can do, what you want to do, if you try to do what you can do?
Hey black child, do you know where you're going, where you're really going? Do you know you can learn what you want to learn if you try to learn what you can learn?
Hey black child, do you know where you're going, where you're really going? Do you know you can learn what you can learn? Did you, would you, what you can learn, what you, would you try to learn what you can learn?
Hey black child, do you know who you are, who you really are? Hey black child, do you know who you are, who you really are? Do you know what you can be, what you want to be, what you try to be, what you can be?
Hey black child. Hey black child, be what you can be, learn what you must learn, do what you can do, and tomorrow your nation will be what you want it to be.
Hey black child, be what you can be, learn what you must learn, do what you can do, and tomorrow your nation will be what you want it to be.
Hey black child, do you know who you are, who you really are? Do you know you can be what you want to be, if you try to be what you can be? Do you know you can be what you want to be, if you try to be what you can be?
Hey, black child.
Sing about Martin.
Sing about Martin.
Sing about caring.
Sing about caring.
Sing about peace.
Sing about peace.
All around the world.
All around the world.
Sing about Martin.
Sing about Martin.
Sing about loving.
Sing about loving.
Sing about peace.
Sing about peace.
All around the world.
All around the world.
Thank you, Ms. Goss. And, uh, your colleague's name?
This is our latest teacher, Mrs. Ford.
Ms. Ford, thank you as well. Uh, we appreciate all the great singing and poem recitals. Uh, Ms. Goss, can you, uh, introduce each child?
We're going to start on the end right here. We have.
Azariah.
Azaria Russell.
Taliyah Mason.
Anthony Craig.
Tyler Petway.
Ajony Kelly.
Mackenzie Hirst.
Kendron Rogers.
Autumn Craig.
Angela Thomas.
Jemaya Parks.
Rodriguez King.
Malcolm Mason.
Christopher George.
Zemaya Bimbo.
Demay David.
Kennedy Bates.
Jordan Wilson.
Kingston Jones.
Addison Moore.
Abigail Renee Seelman.
Preston Samuels.
Well, we want to thank all of y'all. Give them a big round of applause. Thank you all for being here this morning. Councilor Scales?
Ma'am, before you, before you let the kids exit, um, I'm, uh, thank you, uh, mayor, for bringing them. I always love to see children, uh, when, they're so pure. That's what I was standing, I was sitting down saying. But I wanted to say this to you because Phillips Academy has really done a lot to change the face. I went to Phillips High School, so now we are an academy. And, uh, but, but I'm telling you, they were really nice. And, uh, I know that Mr. Seelman wouldn't want me to put him on the spot, but I don't think his daughter is going to mind because she been directing traffic this morning. So, Ms. Abigail, father, works for the city by way of the mayor. And she did a fantastic job along with everyone else this morning. And so we just wanted to spotlight our own jewel. And, uh, and her mother is out there as well. And, uh, but to all of the parents, yourself, uh, as well as Ms. Ford, who is your assistant, it takes a lot to, to work with children, but they're so pure. And I always say, if you ever want to know the truth, ask a child. So, thank you for being with us today. And thank you, mayor, for bringing them. Wonderful presentation. Thank you.
Thank you so much for having us. This has been an amazing year for my kids as well. Uh, Mr. Seelman has presented us with several opportunities to expose my students. So, um, kindergarten is a milestone. And I think that this is a year that they won't forget. So, thank you for having us.
No, thank you, Ms. Mayor, for bringing them. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilors, this morning, we have, um, a very special guest here in our city. Uh, is Ms. B. Smith. Many of you may know, uh, Ms. Smith from her business endeavors in the restaurant arena, as well as her lifestyle programs and shows that she's done down through the years in conjunction with her life partner, which is her husband, uh, who is also her co-partner in the business of B. Smith Enterprise, Dan Gatsby. And I want to take this opportunity to welcome them, first of all, to Birmingham and ask them to come down for a special presentation. Dan, B. As I stated, it's a special honor to, um, welcome B. and her husband here to Birmingham. Uh, I stand before you slightly overweight and part of the problem is her restaurant in New York at Union, I mean, in, uh, Washington at Union Station has caused extra pounds to be on me, but we'll work on that. Uh, we do want to recognize you with a proclamation and a presentation at this time that states, whereas broadcast talent, entrepreneur spokesperson, and multiple award-winning recipient across a wide range of fields, Barbara Elaine Smith began her career as a fashion model, gracing the covers of fifteen magazines and becoming the first African-American woman on Mademoiselle cover in July nineteen seventy-six. In addition to TV commercials for Mercedes-Benz, she has served as a spokesperson for Verizon, Colgate, Pall Mall, Oxy, and McCormick's. McCormick's Lowery seasoning products. And whereas in nineteen eighty-six, she opened her first signature restaurant, B. Smith on Theater Row in Manhattan, she later debuted two other restaurants in Sag Harbor, New York, and Washington, D.C. B. Smith's flair for decor demonstrated in the, uh, ambiance of her restaurants led to the development of her first home collection, which debuted at Bed and Bath &amp; Beyond in two thousand and one. And whereas in two thousand and twelve, B. Smith was, uh, inducted into American Chef Corporation, uh, part of the U.S. Department of State's newly formed diplomatic culinary partnership with the James Beard Foundation and was honored with a two thousand and twelve Silver Spoon Award for sterling performance by food arts. And whereas in two thousand and thirteen, at the age of sixty-four, not supposed to tell a woman's age, I'm sorry, B., uh, B. Smith was diagnosed with early onset Alzheimer's disease. Since then, she and her husband, Dan Gatsby, uh, have worked tirelessly to raise awareness of the disease and its effect on African Ameri, on the African-American community in particular. Their book, Before I Forget, interweaves their narrative with practical and helpful advice, teaching about dealing with the day-to-day challenges, the family realities and tensions, and ways of coping. And whereas for nearly a decade, B. Smith hosted the nationally syndicated cable television show, B. Smith with Style, that aired on NBC stations in forty countries. Her effervescent personality and creative ideas continue to impact national audiences via her appearances on programs such as Good Morning America and The Today Show. She and Dan have also produced four specials for TV One, the lifestyle cable network for African-Americans. And whereas B. Smith has authored three home entertaining, entertaining books, uh, for her, uh, and for her latest book, Her Husband Dan and Vanity Fair contributing editor, Michael Snairson, uh, is the story of her fight with Alzheimer's, Before I Forget. Now, therefore, I, William A. Bell, Senior, Mayor of the City of Birmingham, Alabama, do hereby issue this proclamation in honor and recognition of Barbara Elaine B. Smith. And B., we also want to present to you this token, a crystal symbol of the seal of the city of Birmingham along with this proclamation.
I'm not going to talk for a long time or anything like that because we've got lots, lots to do today here. Um, but I do want to thank you very much for having my husband and myself and, uh, some of the people who work with us here. And I'm really excited about being here. So, thank you very much for, um, helping us enjoy being here.
I, I just want to say a few things on behalf of my wife, who is my love of my life and the nicest human being I've ever met. You know, there are no accidents. Uh, we came down to Birmingham and we'd been before. And we came down, we had the good, uh, pleasure of meeting, uh, the mayor and several friends through Bobby Knight and, and Gary Burley. And we ran into an old friend that we've known for twenty-five years, Don Logan. And what we understood when we were here, we saw such kindness and such gentility that, and we realized what we were dealing with. After going to the Civil Rights Institute, we wanted to start our book tour right here in Birmingham, Alabama. We thought it was important because what Alzheimer's is, is it's a twenty-first century civil rights issue. Two out of three people with Alzheimer's are women. African-Americans are two to three times more likely to have it. And the cost of Alzheimer's in money and time, treasure and time, is something that a person of moderate means could be put into destitution. So, after being moved by the, the institute, after meeting the people, after realizing what Birmingham has been, is, and what it will be, and I got to tell you, there are no accidents. Seeing those young people today, seeing the future, seeing kindergartners, seeing kids and, and the scouts, you know, you guys, and I do that euphemistically because I mean women and men. You have to deal with so much. When we dedicated this book, we dedicated this book to the United States Congress because we believe in America, we believe in government. Whether you want big, small, we have to have government. And then we have to have people committed to knowing that what you do does matter. Your vote matters, your involvement matters, your appreciation for the future. Looking at those kindergartners, telling those young men who are wearing those uniforms, one day they may be serving our nation in far, in harm's way. What you're doing matters. And I ask you to just remember one thing. Everyone talks about the three Rs, reading, writing, and arithmetic. But what you guys and gals are doing is the three Cs. Anybody can complain, and I know you get enough complaints. Some people have the right to critique, but what you can do is create a better environment for now and the future. So, we want to thank you on behalf of Sweetie and myself. We appreciate it. We love being here. And we wanted to make this stand about this issue in Birmingham, Alabama. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I will make sure that the entire city council gets a book, but we wanted to present books to the president and to the mayor. So... This is for Jonathan and obviously Mr. Mayor. And I must admit, that, that, you know, that is, that's a fuel tank for, for the test.
Mr. Gatsby and Ms. Ms. Smith, right here. You might miss me. I want to thank you all for coming here. I, I've been very fortunate that I've been to the restaurant in, um, in New York, in Manhattan, uh, where you got to look upstairs, you go up to the stairs and what have you. And, um, it was just a great experience for me. And I've also been to the one in DC. And, uh, and we watched B. for a long time. And you certainly, um, are poised for, for really being a great example of what, uh, the American dream is all about. And so I just really appreciate your work, um, and appreciate your hip make uh, because I think you all are making a difference. And I really do appreciate that. And I don't know if the mayor recall, but, uh, when I came back to that restaurant, I came back and talked to him. I said, you know, we need to get B. down here at, um, at the entertainment district. Remember that, Mr. Mayor? And so, um, and I made this big announcement. I said, we sure like, like to get him. So, but it's good to see you all. I know that's a business decision, but, uh, we should, you know, we are in need of folk like you, uh, in this city. And so, thank you so very much.
Councilman Hoyt, this is not the last time you'll see us, okay?
All right, very good. All right.
Councilor Scales? Working on it. Thank you, folks.
Thank you, everybody.
Councilor Scales?
I was about to say before you leave, let me, let me just tell you something. As a, my grandmother, my mother's mother, uh, actually passed with Alzheimer's. My mother had to take care of her. So, the first thing, when you started speaking, what spoke to me more loudly is the fact that you kissed on the forehead. And one thing I know about Alzheimer's, there are just some people that you never forget, regardless of what happens. And the care that you show your wife, I know you here for business, but I wanted to tell you as a woman, that I recognize that. And I want to tell you, you remind me of my husband because my husband is a quiet, gentle giant. He's a bad when it comes to his wife, but he's, he's a gentle giant. And that's the epitome of a real man. And I want to tell you, sister, you got a real man beside, I don't have to tell you that. But I just wanted to let you know, I recognize that. I'm so happy that you all both are in Birmingham. And I'm glad that you're able to tell your story and to bring awareness to it because a lot of people don't know what it takes away. And especially to see my mother's mother, who was such a strong woman, and to see her go through that. And that's why I, immediately when the mayor said, you know, what the book was about, I put my eyes on you. And you gave me something to look for, sir. I just wanted to tell you, thank you. I'm grateful for you, ma'am, and I welcome you to Birmingham.
Thank you very much.
You got it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. President.
Uh, Councilor Rafferty?
Yes, um, that's quite all right. Glen Campbell's song.
Yes.
Is the most powerful song that I have heard. And I'm sure both of you have listened to it and read the words.
Yes.
I spent three years caring for my grandmother with stroke-induced Alzheimer's. It is a unique, educational, enlightening experience. And you are blessed to have to go through it because it is a transition. Although it's hard to deal with the disease, the beauty of the relationship as it evolves.
Yes.
Is one that you will carry with you till the day that you die.
Councilwoman Rafferty, you know, the thing I try to stress to young people is the mistake that we can make early on is to love what we like. You got to like who you love. And if you understand that, that will take you so far in terms of the journey, but also the appreciation of what's important in life. And what you're doing, you, you, you get not so much, you're doing the right things. Just, you know, I always say the shortest distance between two points in math is a straight line, but it's the truth. Just stick to the truth and you'll never have to worry. The battle won't be within yourself. And that's, and, and anyone who's been in this, this club, and it's a club, you don't have to explain. It's not virtual. You know, it's not like driving a car in a mach, in a, in a digital game. And you say it's sort of like, and then you get behind the wheel and you find it's a different thing. When you're in the club, you know exactly what I'm dealing with, I know what you're, you've dealt with, and I know exactly. We don't have, we don't have to talk, we can feel it. We don't have to talk, we can feel it. Thank you so much.
And caregivers are the most beautiful of angels. Underappreciated, under-supported because we don't realize how much we're needed. As parents, it's an easy call.
Right.
You have a baby, you're thrown into it. But becoming a caregiver and having to take to that last yard.
Yes.
And having to walk somebody to a place, that can be very frightening for both sides of it. It takes a blessed person. So any caregiver that has walked that walk, either for a short period of time or until the end of their time, you're a godsend.
You know, my family, police, fire, EMS, they're first responders. A caregiver is a first responder. When many in the family step back, that caregiver steps up.
Absolutely.
And you begin to find out what family is all about.
That's right.
When you got to do something 24/7.
Yes.
And so, I just ask each and every one of you to say a prayer, not for us. I don't want to see those little kids have to take care of somebody 30, 40 years from now. I don't want to see somebody that's graduating from college that doesn't realize that if we don't get a handle on this, when they go through and put all of their efforts and achieve all of the things that you do, that this country has given us the opportunities, they get to their 50s or 60s, and because we're living longer, now they're going to have to spend what, money and time and treasure to take care of their parents or their aunties or their nanas. That's why we need, this is like infrastructure. You either pay now a little or you pay significantly later. This is something our government has to get around. We spend far too little for what we can do to make a real difference. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Mr. President, I also want to thank Rosie Butler for, first of all, her friendship with the city and for bringing Dan and B. here today.
She left today.
Counselor Hoyt, it may take a while, but we still working on what you asked for.
Okay, all right. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And believe me, Rosie's been the wind beneath our wings. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I'd like to ask Counsel Lady Rafferty if she would come down for a presentation concerning the Girl Scouts of America and their fundraising drive. It's that time again, Girl Scout cookies. I don't know if I've eaten up all the cases from last year, but I'll get some more cases this year. It is an opportunity for all of us to support the Girl Scouts National Initiative to raise funds for their organization. And this morning, we'd like to present to the counsel lady and other representatives of the Girl Scouts this proclamation, which reads, "February 26th through the 28th, 2016, March, National Girl Scout Cookie Weekend, celebrating all of the fun and excitement Girl Scouts have had selling cookies for nearly a century while learning five essential skills, goal-setting, decision-making, money management, people skills, and business ethics. And whereas during Girl Scout cookie season, each amazing young cookie boss will sell cookies at booths, door-to-door, and through digital cookie. The First Nation Digital Platform that enables girls to learn 21st century skills while selling cookies through their own personalized cookie websites. And whereas throughout its long and distinguished history, Girl scouting has inspired nearly 60 million girls and women with the highest ideals of character, conduct, and patriotism. And whereas through Girl Scout, through Girl scouting, girls gain courage, confidence, and character, who make their local communities and the world a better place. And whereas more than 2.7 million current Girl Scout members nationwide will be celebrating the tradition of Girl Scout cookies and National Girl Scout Cookie Weekend. And now, therefore, I William A. Bell Senior, Mayor of the City of Birmingham, Alabama, do hereby issue this proclamation designating February 26th through the 28th as National Girl Scout Cookie Weekend in Birmingham and urge all of our citizens to recognize this diverse and talented group of professionals and their many contributions to the good of our city and nation. In witness thereof, I, you don't need to know all that part. But anyway, want to make this presentation to say thank you all so much for the work that you're doing in making women out of our young girls, responsible young ladies to take their rightful place in leadership capacities throughout the world. So thank you all so much.
Thank you, Mayor.[909.43][909.43](APPLAUSE). I want to share this, the real heroes, the real heroes, we've got Nakia and Kaylin here. Mayor, if you please, they would really appreciate a photograph with you. We do truly appreciate Mayor Bell, all members of the city council for your support and your continued support of our great program where you're helping to our girls and young women to develop courage, confidence, and character to make the world a better place. And I hope in the near future that some of our young women are going to be sitting here and taking your places and leading our communities to greatness. I want to say one thing, the lady that always is in the background, Nicole Harris here, she spearheads this drive. We're going to sell over a million packages of cookies this year, and she's the real spearhead behind the organization. We forget about her so often. So thank you, Mayor, all the council friends. And our girls have brought you something special. They've all brought you something special. So they've brought you something to share with y'all. So appreciate it. Thank you.
I'm a do-si-do guy, so.[972.73][972.73](LAUGHING).
Mr. President?
Can they pass them out to you all?
Yeah, well, I'm glad that you all are here this morning. I'm a Girl Scout dad, and I think I've sold more cookies than I really wanted to in my lifespan. But it's a wonderful opportunity for young girls to go and to be somebody great. So my daughter now will be 21 this weekend. And I can tell you, it was quite an experience. She was a member of Princeton Girl Scouts, was one of the most successful Girl Scout cookie-selling troops in the state of Alabama. And we went to, we took a Disney cruise. We sold so many cookies that we took a cruise and folks thought we had won a lottery because we took over 150 folk and 80 something girls to own a Disney cruise for seven days. And I said, wow. So I just want you to know, there's some real good benefits in selling those cookies. So get to selling the cookies.
So I just want to say, you know, good luck to y'all. I was a Girl Scout. I sold the cookies too. I still have my uniform. Of course, I can't get in it because I ate too many Girl Scout cookies. But being a scout, the best thing about being a scout is the camaraderie and the character that it teaches you. And the thing I remember is all those dumb Girl Scout songs we used to sing. Oh, that was the part I hated the most because I couldn't sing. But I enjoyed selling cookies.
Do you still remember the songs?
Y'all, I do. I'm not going to sing them because I can't sing. But being a Girl Scout was wonderful. And the only thing I faulted my troop for is we didn't go on enough real campouts. They thought camping out was in a building on a bed. That's not camping out. But it was a great time, and I'm up here, and I hope to see one of y'all up here in a few years when I'm in the home and in my rocking chair, so eating Girl Scout cookies. Y'all do well.
Thank you, Mr. President. I wasn't a Girl Scout. But I must have a cookie monster in my house, ma'am, because I had a box of Samoas that are now gone. So I need to buy three more boxes for a late-night stack. So can you all make that happen for me today? All right, I'll.
We've all had breakdust of that.
All right, I just need three more boxes of Samoas. Thank you so much. That's my favorite. Thank you.
I'm glad because you're not going to get mine.
Is there anyone else? Well, what I want to say is, as a Brownie, I sold 2,000 boxes of Girl Scout cookies.
I don't doubt it.
I enjoy selling Girl Scout cookies. Until the last two years, I kind of took a break because now I'm selling stuff for the school band. But I think all of, I'm looking at the department heads here, I think I've sold Girl Scout cookies to just about everybody on the mayor's staff.
Thank you.
Sometimes certain people buy a lot more than others. Counselor Hoyt, your assistant last year bought at least three cases of Tray Falls for me because her son would inhale them. She'd take six boxes home and they'd be gone the next morning. So, and I spoke to our Boy Scout friends here in the audience while we were outside and told them, we really have to come up with a marketing scheme like cookies because Boy Scouts are way far behind on this fundraising thing. But I love the Girl Scouts. And I want to thank Karen for taking the leadership role with the Cohaba Council, correct? That's where we are?
North Central.
North Central now, okay. So we're North Central. Definitely support them. This is the, almost the worst time though of the year to sell Girl Scout cookies because everybody's on a diet after Christmas. But we've got those taste buds, you know, the thin mints and the Samoas can go in the freezer. The Tray Falls are pretty good if you just wrap them up in foil and you can knock them out in the fall over some hot cocoa next year. I can sell these things, I'm telling you. And we thank the Girl Scouts for everything they do. And good luck to you and your sales in the next three weeks.
Next four weeks.
Next four weeks of booth sales. So look everywhere for them and buy as many as you can.
Thank you. Thank you. Appreciate it.
I want to say real quick, Counselor Abbott's troop, she has a troop that meets at Avondale United Methodist Church, and it is probably the most unique troop you've ever wanted to meet. There's 77 girls from 22 different schools, from all racial, ethnic backgrounds, from all social, economic levels. And if you ever want to have fun on a Sunday afternoon, go to Avondale United Methodist Church and just have some fun with girls. I appreciate y'all. Thank you so much.
Does Counsel Abbott sing at Avondale United Methodist Church?
No singing. No singing.
Counsel President, John Harris, who's out here in the audience, want everybody to know that this beautiful young lady is his daughter.[1288.15][1288.15](APPLAUSE). At this time, we'd like for the representatives for Money Expo to please come forward. As you all know, financial education is the key to existence here in the U.S. Our system of government, our system of economics require that we all have a basic understanding of finances in our lives. And each year, we have an event here in Birmingham, the Alabama Expo, that brings attention to how individuals and groups can really maximize their financial potential. And this morning, we would like to recognize the, this year's Alabama Money Expo with this proclamation. And it reads as follows. Whereas Financial Education Outreach is a community-focused nonprofit that addresses financial literacy gaps while providing access to tools and resources for building economic security. They provide comprehensive economic and financial education to individuals, families, and youth through free multi-session learning opportunities. Their programs teach children about saving and setting financial goals, educate the public about the importance of monitoring their credit reports, scams, financial exploitation, fraud, and identity theft, teach young people and adults about budgeting and managing money, and cover topics such as smart shopping tips, investing, protecting assets, and how to pay for college. And whereas in its second year, FEO's Money Expo, Alabama Money Expo, attracted approximately 600 attendees. Exhibitors from both Alabama, Georgia, and Georgia have represented local, state, and national companies and organizations. And whereas Financial Education Outreach is dedicated to helping individuals discover the value of a financial plan, now therefore, I William A. Bell Senior, Mayor of the City of Birmingham, Alabama, hereby issue this proclamation in recognition of the Financial Education Outreach Alabama Money Expo and urge all of our citizens to recognize FEO as they strive to promote the importance of financial planning. And this morning, we would like to present this proclamation and encourage everyone to come out to this event and to participate and be educated about their finances and developing a financial plan. So let me present this to you.
Thank you. Mayor, we certainly appreciate your support, President Austin, and all of our servant leaders surrounding us. We certainly appreciate your support. This is the third year of the Alabama Money Expo. We are also having the Alabama Financial Education and Professional Development Summit on Friday, March 4th. It will bring leaders from financial stability organizations from across the country. And we will be at UAB on Friday for this conference. The Alabama Money Expo will be at Carver High School, again, thank you Birmingham City Schools, from 9:00 until 3:00. Our programming is directed towards middle schoolers, parents, and adults. We have a track for middle schoolers, we have a track, I'm sorry, a track for high schoolers, and a track for adults. We will also have entertainment by Hart King, who is the finalist from America's Got Talent. Out on the table, there are posters, and there is also a community announcement talking about the different sessions that we'll have at the Alabama Money Expo. We have experts there who are willing to spend their time helping people improve their financial situation. I want to introduce to you our honorary co-chair, Stuart Welch of the Welch Group, Kimberly Reynolds of the Welch Group, who is also Secretary of the FEO Board, Natalie Parker of Sonova's Bank, who's a member of the FEO Board, and Judy Woods, one of our planning committee members from United Way of Central Alabama. We've been working on this since June of last year. We expect approximately 1,500 people to come to the Alabama Money Expo. You should register online and select workshops as well as the one-on-one sessions. They fill up quickly. We'll have one-on-one sessions with financial planners. We'll have one-on-one sessions for VITA tax preparation, for FASA filing, for credit counseling. We'll have the BBNT Bank Bus and many, many workshops that will help you improve your financial situation. Just piggybacking on one of the previous presentations, having heard from many people talk about their shock when it comes to long-term care, taking care of their family member, we will have a segment this year on long-term care with long-term care expert, Babs Hart. And so, not only do we have estate planning and retirement planning, there are many, many items that will address any of the situations that we all have across our lifetime. And so, again, we encourage all the citizens of Birmingham to take advantage of this free opportunity and come to the Alabama Money Expo on Friday, March 5th. Thank you again, Mayor, and thank you, President Austin.
Counselor Hoyt?
Yeah, well, I want to thank you all for coming this morning. I was, had a thing on Facebook, said 10 things rich people know and you don't. And I'm just trying to find out whatever they know. Because I do desire to be rich one day, but I don't think it's going to happen in my lifetime. But I think it's, financial literacy is something that's important and certainly for any college student, you know, just knowing how to manage, really in high school. And I always share with this council that my wife put my daughter on a budget when her 11th grade year because she wanted her to know how to manage money. And so, she set up an account, said, this is what you got to work with. Anything over that, you got to do it out. And so, she's learned that and she's taken that to Spelman, but I just got to figure out how about pay for Spelman. So that's what I'm trying to figure out right now.
Come to the X.
Yeah, but it's just wonderful that you all would be here this morning, and I think earlier is better. Anytime we can expose our young people to literacy and with respect to finance, I think is important. So it has the value of life and money because with it, you can do a lot of things. And so, thank you all this morning, and so good to see Pennant. Pennant and I worked together at Jefferson County Housing Authority so many, many years ago. So we appreciate you very much.
Ms. Protem?
Thank you, Mr. President. To Ms. Southwood and to those that are here in support, as committee members, thank you, Mayor, for bringing this presentation today. I actually went by this event on last year, and I've been asked to come by and see how the logistics and operations were set up for this event, the seminars, the discussions. And I was truly impressed. I really was to see the financial community within this region come together and assemble within George Washington Carver High School Gymnasium and really want to educate citizens about financial stability and growth. So I just want to commend you all. And I'm saying this, I was surprised. I had no idea. And to see the components and the educational opportunities that were there is truly tremendous. So I want to thank you all for your leadership and coming together, make this possible for our community. And it's very, it's truly needed, and it's going to be another successful event on March the 5th. So thank you all for what you're doing. Thank you, Ms. President.
Counsel Abbott?
Yes, I want to thank y'all for doing what you're doing. For those of you who don't read Mr. Welch's column in the newspaper, is it every Sunday? I read it. And when I went to college, I didn't even know how to write a check. You know, I had lots of book smarts, but I didn't even know how to write a check. So I am so happy that we're educating high school students and middle school students on the importance of knowing what you're doing when it comes to your money. It's beneficial to all of us for everyone to be wealthy. If we're all wealthy, you know, we're not wasting all that tax money, we're not fighting over minimum wage because, hey, you're not worried about it anymore. So I just want to thank you for what you're doing, for just something that there's no cost and people can just show up, you know, register first. But I mean, it's not, it's not something that takes money, and for a lot of folks, just the little bit of money it would take to pay for a seminar, they can't come up with it. So I thank you for what you're doing, and it's been a while since the Sports Medicine and Fitness Institute, but see, I've been following Mr. Welch for a long time. All his clients have money. So y'all just follow him around and you'll find out those top ten things.
Well, I'm gonna follow him out of here.
Yeah, you just follow him on out. But thank you for what you're doing.
And he does a workshop, and his workshop this year is?
How to invest a hundred dollars or more and create a super fantastic retirement.
Like a hundred dollars.
I can handle that.
You can come up with that.
You have to register.
Counsel Tyson?
I think the program is a great program. My daughter went through a program, it's, you're never young, are too young to go through this. My daughter could write my bills out at the age of ten years old, and they actually had it in her, in her classes when she was in the third grade. And she also went through the same financial program, that was back when neighborhood housing had it. So she was able to comprehend and actually balance a checkbook, write out a check, and everything. She's so stingy now, it's just ridiculous.
It's ridiculous.
I'm talking about, she's pure out stingy. She believe in buying quality things, but she's really, she's tight on a budget, she really is. And, and it, and it just taught her how to line up her money. And she, she tells me, she says, "Mother, it's, it's all about thinking about your money and where it's going." And, and that's what she does now, but she was at the age of ten years old writing a check. And it, and it also encouraged me to do the Financial Freedom Program that I do, repairing people credit. And I have people in there, you know, talking about investing money and, and all of that too. And I don't have a whole lot of money, but I know how to spend a little bit of money I got and make people think I got a lot of money. So your program, I just believe in it, and I think it need to be in, in, in the elementary schools, start in the elementary schools and in the high schools where these kids will actually know how to budget their money when they go off to college.
And Counsel, we do start in kindergarten?
That's good.
And go through high school. And one of the things I did not mention, if you have children who thinks that money grows on trees, bring them to the Expo. We have a reality check simulation that helps them, they will be an adult for a day, and they will have to spend that paycheck and take care of the bills that we take care of. We will talk to them, we have sessions called Teens in Money, we have sessions called Money Smart. And then over on the other side, we're talking to the parents about what we're talking to their kids about. And so if you've got family members and friends who are struggling with helping their teenager or the young person understand the value of a dime, delayed gratification, this is the place to be. And Ben Franklin. Ben Franklin will spend forty-five minutes with the middle schoolers having a conversation about money.
That's great. Wonderful program.
Thank you so much.
Thank you all very much. Thank you. That's all I have, Ms. President.
All right. Mr. Clerk, we haven't had any announcements of any boards and agencies. All right, move on with the consideration of the consent agenda.
Okay, the consent agenda starts on page two. We have items one, two, three, and four on consent. Page three, items five, six, seven, and eight are on consent. Page four, items nine and ten are on consent. Page five, items eleven and twelve are on consent. Then we skip over to page seven. We have item number twenty-one on consent. Page eight, we have items twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six, and twenty-seven on consent. Page nine, we have item number twenty-eight on consent. And on page ten, we have items thirty-one, thirty-two, and thirty-three on the consent agenda. And on page eleven, we have items thirty-five and thirty-six on consent.
All right. Do we have any, Counsel Abbott?
Yes, Mr. President, I would like to add item eighteen on page seven to the consent agenda.
Which, which item?
Item eighteen on page seven.
Good. Is that it?
That's it.
All right. All right, I have on page six, item fifteen. I'm gonna add that to consent. And on page nine, item twenty-nine and thirty. Do you want to add item thirty-eight? Counsel Scales?
Sir, on item thirty-two, page ten, it can remain on consent if I can get this one question answered. And I know that this is for, this particular item is for Public Works Department. So my question is, I noticed that when I've been attending neighborhood meetings, that there have been mention of several vehicles within the department that is broken down. Are there any other needs that, that you all have that is related like this, for this purpose? Yes, sir.
These particular, these particular units will be used for the spray program in the downtown area to spray the cracks around the curves where things should, should not be growing. We have growths in the cracks around the curves and along the sidewalks, so these small units can navigate the sidewalks and keep the downtown area up.
I appreciate that, but while we're at it, is there any particular reason why they're just downtown only?
Well, they will spread out, that's what we will start at initially, but they will spread out to other areas around the city as we expand our program.
Okay, so one last question, Ms. President, if that is okay. Unless there's an oversight on my part, how many of these four-wheel trucksters does this pay for? I see when the period of how long it is going to be, I guess, to lease it, how many are there?
If I'm not mistaken, I think there are five.
All right, I'm gonna leave this on consent, but I'll be honest with you, that, that kind of give me a little heartburn if I, if I hear downtown first and I'm really concerned about how these other neighborhoods are going to be treated with the same vehicles that the city council, citywide, is approving. So I hope that you make it to those other neighborhoods. Thank you, Ms. President.
All right. Counsel Tyson, do you have anything you want to add?
Yes, you said it's five vehicles.
Yes, Counsel, or two.
Well, can't you put one in District Six and let them be spraying while the fourth is spraying downtown?
Okay, we, let me, we will have some pickups and larger trucks spraying around the neighborhoods and around the other areas. These will, sidewalk areas, and there are some other areas in the city that have sidewalks that we might need to take care of.
Well, let's start in District Six as a pilot project.
Counsel Rafferty?
Your name is?
All right, do we have any other members who wish to speak to the consent agenda? Are there any members of the public who wish to speak to an item that has been placed on the consent agenda and marked as a public hearing? You may now approach the podium. There are any members of the public who wish to speak to an item that has been placed on the consent agenda and marked as a public hearing, you may now approach the podium. All right, we have a mover in a second.
I move approval.
Sir?
Abbott, Roberson.
Counsel Member Hoyt, Abbott. Yes, Member Hoyt.
Oh, indeed. That item passes. Next item is Clerk, call up item. Twenty-two.
A resolution appointing one member to the Birmingham Library Board, forty-five-year term, expiring December the thirty-first, two thousand and twenty.
Counsel Abbott?
Move the item.
Roberson, Parker.
Thank you. There is a, we do have an error here. This is, the committee's request is to appoint James A. Sullivan to fill the unexpired term of Monique Gardner Witherspoon, who resigned. That term ends on twelve thirty-one sixteen.
Move the item.
Do we have any other names to be entered in the nomination? We'll close with that name. We're ready to vote.
You have that, what, these? That change?
Okay. With the change.
And that was, I just missed the individuals.
It was, uh...
James A. Sullivan.
Nope, not, not that name. The motion is the second, I'm sorry.
Parker and Abbott. No, it's Hoyt. Parker and Hoyt.
Parker and Hoyt. All right, thanks.
Sorry.
Oh, okay, voting should be open for that appointment. Counsel Member Rafferty, I'm D., thank you, that vote should be up.
That item passes unanimously. Next item, Mr. Clerk, call up item seventeen.
Item seventeen, an ordinance, amending ordinance number sixteen dash twenty-five, adopted by the council February the ninth, two thousand and sixteen, by changing the minimum wage amount to ten dollars and ten cents per hour, and the minimum wage effective date from March the first, two thousand and sixteen, to February the twenty-fourth, two thousand and sixteen.
Move the item.
This is for unanimous consent. All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Move the item.
Second.
That item is before us. Do we have any speakers to the item? Counsel Abbott?
Yes, I have a concern. My concern, well, I actually have two concerns. One is, we're now saying that we want people to raise the wages of their employees by tomorrow. I think that that's a little bit of a short notice for businesses in Birmingham to be told that they have to raise people's wages on tomorrow. The other concern I have is that the state legislature, I believe we have other issues before the state legislature that the city is interested in getting accomplished. I'm concerned that by doing this, we will be sort of cutting our own throats. The legislature's going to do what it wants to do, and we don't really have any control over what they do. All we can do is ask politely for them to do things and hope they listen to us. So my concern is that by doing this, when we know the direction they're heading, you know, it's like that old Jim Croce song, you don't tug on Superman's cape, you don't spit into the wind, you don't pull the mask off the old Lone Ranger, and you don't mess with people who can make your life miserable. And that's my concern, is how is this going to be perceived by the people in the legislature? And when we need help with something else, what is their attitude going to be towards us? And that, that to me is a legitimate concern, and I hope it's something that we can discuss before we take a vote.
Counsel Hoyt?
Yes, thank you, Ms. President. I, I did, like Counsel Abbott, got calls relative to this issue, and last night, I was on the phone at ten o'clock, and just trying to say, Mr. President, is there, is there another alternative, or if in fact, we could institute it, but over a period of time? So just, you know, I just thought I'd ask.
You want me to respond to that?
Yes, if you could, please, sir.
Well, we have a...
Because I'm full.
I know. Okay. We have a, we have options before us that we can implore or employ as we move forward with this, depending on what the council does. What we are traveling under is the, the fact that the city has the police authority, it's in the, it's in the ordinance itself, which has been granted to us by the state legislature. The issue that we are debating today, and the reason why, is because we have, we have, we've done everything we could except for put it in, in place today or tomorrow, according to the ordinance, and tried to work with the legislate, legislature on it. Of course, you all know that I went down to Montgomery last week after the council, after council adjourned, and I spoke with the leadership in both the House and the Senate about this particular bill, and I know Counsel Tyson and Counsel Rafferty were either down, I know Counsel Rafferty was down there, but Tyson's been talking to him too and been down there. And, you know, one of the, the concerns that, that we have as a, the one of the concerns that I have, I'll put it that way, as a city, is that we, the legislature is one hundred percent in favor of states' rights, yet they want to come in and dictate to this elected body, who we were elected by, these citizens, what we do and how we govern ourselves. The Mayor Council Act was clear when they established the city of Birmingham, or the city charter, whatever it was that established the city of Birmingham, was clear in giving the power, and at that point, the Mayor Council Act, to the legislative branch of government and the city itself to police itself. So we do have that authority, and we are the ones as a city who would have to enforce this as well. So I believe that we can, as we always have, figure out a way to, to address it and to make sure that it is, it is something that can be done and something that we are in control of. The main thing, I think, that, that we should be concerned about is not so much about this particular issue, the minimum wage. This just brought up other issues as it relates to the legislature, and that is the city having control of its, having control of itself, the city, and that's what we were elected to do. And so there's a move across not just the state of Alabama, but across this entire country to take that control, take that local control away from us. And, and that is, that should concern every member of this council, that they are, that they are trying to take that control away from us. But we pass this today, goes into effect tomorrow, we are the ones also that have to enforce it. So Counselor, and, and even for the business community, I think that, that we certainly understand the concerns that have been expressed, and I do as well, and, and I'm concerned about that, and I believe that we can do something that will make sure that the, the impact would be minimal to our businesses. And that's, I know what your concern is, and mine as well, so.
Well, Ms. President, then, then let me ask this.
I hope that answers your question.
It does. It gives me a greater insight, and so, but I want the public to understand that if in fact we pass this today, that any ordinance that we put forth has the flexibility to be amended. And so, if in fact, as a medium, happy medium with the legislature, then I think this puts us in a position to do that. And so, I'm not gonna frown too much today, and as much as it may, uh, create an opportunity for us to sit, uh, with the, uh, the state legislature and to see how we might, uh, find that, that middle ground, uh, with respect to what we're trying to do. And so, um, I'm in favor of it, uh, I'm gonna vote in the affirmative, and hoping that, um, we have a conversation collectively uh, with our, um, Jefferson County, uh, delegation and, and even some beyond that, because it's gonna, if you do it a general bill, then it's gonna have to be, we're gonna spend some time with a whole lot of folk, uh, in the state legislature. But, if we can also get them to revisit and to say, uh, if it needs to be Birmingham Pacific, then I think that too provides an opportunity. So, just want to explore all of those, um, different components and, um, you know, I, I just believe, uh, we got to do right by the people. I heard somebody wrote on a, uh, Facebook last night, what about the police? Well, I don't think the police make ten dollars an hour. I think they make more than that, quite frankly. And, uh, but it was obviously somebody who was uninformed. I, I don't think anybody, uh, in particular, uh, men and women in blue make, uh, less than ten dollars an hour. So, um, obviously, he didn't know. And if he had asked me, I'd have told him, but he wouldn't, speaking to me, I was just reading somebody else's stuff. But, anyway, um, I'm with you, uh, today, sir.
Counselor Rafferty?
I have, uh, some serious problems with what's being presented today, um, and what was presented originally. Not because I don't believe in a, a working, living wage. I have a problem with the way that we're going about it, especially today, because I see this as a frivolous political play to beat the legislature, to prove a point, and I think that makes bad law. I have seen no evidence of open, public discussion, debate, or, uh, uh, study concerning, uh, engaging the city with our legislators in Montgomery at this point in time, nor with the small business owners or the activists that are pushing for this. I haven't seen that. So, there have been instances of certain people discussing it. So, you stated that we are charged, under the city charter, um, that we have the power for police, policing our own jurisdiction, but I don't see this as a police action. I see this as a social action, that the city should be engaged in. I also support our position in home rule. But, in going through all of the facts and talking to engaged individuals, including somebody that really enlightened me to another aspect to it that I hadn't really heard from this morning, I find, in the best interest of fair and equitable law, that this matter constitutionally belongs to the state and the federal government. And as well, this ordinance does not secure minimum wage status to all employees. It does discriminate, because you still have waitstaff and other, um, entities that have, that earn less than minimum wage, hourly wage, because they receive, supposedly receive a certain level of tips. So, we're not even securing minimum wage for everyone that you wanna help. You're only doing a, a partway. So, I can't support legislation that only does a job halfway. Either we're gonna do it right, and we're gonna do it for the right purposes, and we're gonna ensure that everyone is included into this, or we need to step back and rethink how we're moving forward. Thank you.
Counselor Tyson?
They have had several, the organizations have had several town hall meetings. They have had town hall meetings in Montgomery. We have met with all of the legislative representatives that wanted to attend the meetings. The organizers are out in the audience. They have had them. We have had them in Birmingham, and the council people were, that wanted to come, attended, if they wanted to attend, and if they was, if they was, uh, interested in the minimum wage increase. Uh, when she's talking about the, the waitresses and the waiters, it's not an ordinance that can make these owners, make them, pay them more, because as long as they are bringing their, um, their, uh, tips up to the minimum wage status, whether it's seven twenty-five or ten-ten, it's gonna still be operated the same way. I used to be a waitress, and I, and I know, because back when it was two ninety, we was making that, and I asked them, I said, I thought we supposed to make two ninety. He said, no, I don't care what the minimum wage is. If you make, I was making a dollar fifty cent, your tip's supposed to bring you back up to two ninety. And if you weren't making enough tips to bring up to two ninety, that's when they add on. So, this right here, no matter which way we write it, will never do that, because that's what the, the owner of the business is supposed to do. When you increase the minimum wage, poor people don't save money. It goes straight into economy. They can't do nothing but buy food and pay for the utilities and rent and stuff. We seem to get amnesia when we get two dollars above folks. I just don't, I cannot understand that. The legislators that's down there pushing against this thing, they will never see anybody making seven twenty-five. They maids don't make seven twenty-five. So, they would not relate to that. And you find more poor people voting against their interests than anybody I ever seen, because it's the status quo, and that's what your race supposed to tell you. This right here is, this is nothing, this ain't no personal issue right here. Legislation is not personal. It's something that we suppose, it speaks in the Bible about paying people for what they work for. That's all we are doing. That's what we supposed to do, by the Bible, and by legislation, we supposed to do that. If we let, if you, if we wanna just keep kissing these people's boots, keep on doing it. It ain't gonna get you nowhere. It's not gonna get you nowhere. Economy, if we raise the minimum wage, the business owner gonna make more money, because fifty-four percent of people in Birmingham are making minimum wage. We don't save money, we gonna spend every dime we got, 'cause it takes every dime to live. It, minimum wage supposed to be ten ninety anyway. If we had to keep up with the standards of where it was wrote by the federal government, which we have never kept up with it. Can't you see, it's in these southern states that they are picking with the cities? Can't you see this? Can't you see this? In the, in the, in the small businesses, they have, the, the more employees they pay minimum wage, they have the federal government backing them up, giving them money for keeping these people at a low income. See, see, if you wanna do the research, research that. They have people keep paying them to keep these people like that. But, we have nothing in place to help the working poor. We don't have enough soup kitchens in Birmingham to replace the meals that these people are missing. We had to open up a place to serve breakfast over in West End, because we have people cannot eat three meals a day, because they ain't making enough money. So, what are we gonna do about that, filling in that gap? Alabama has the lowest welfare of distributing out to people in the country, the lowest. We take care of our poor people the worst in Alabama. So, what are we gonna do? Continue to let people starve, live in poverty? And the reason we are sick is because we are not making enough money to take care of ourselves. Remember that, that's why we are sick. That's why this state has the worst, uh, uh, health issues. We have the worst, uh, uh, economy. The housing is the worst, because we are not paying our people enough money to make it our everyday life for them. So, we gotta remember that. Bump the legislators, because I don't care how much you, you, you cater to them, they are not gonna take care of the people that they need to take care of. Let's understand that. We got to remember this, I'm ready for the move to vote.
Counselor Scales? Counselor Scales?
Thank you, Ms. President. Well, let me, let me say this, um, because I did tell everything that my colleague Tyson was saying. Let me say this, because I, I, before I get started, I, I would ask that you all don't clap, because I don't want it to be said, it is inappropriate in the chamber, okay? But, let me just say this. I had the distinct pleasure, just last week, of going on Bessemer Road. Most people know Counselor Rafferty, uh, supported the piece of legislation talking about payday lending. And I stood outside and I said to the folk who advocate for people all the time, I said, you know, I come from the west side of Birmingham, and I said, you got title max, you got a title loan, you got easy pawn, and within a block, you got all of these places, and none of them are going out of business. Everybody makes money off the poor people, but the poor people. There is a reason why there is a spike in crime when you have poverty. Poverty is as a result of opportunities being denied. If you don't have money, I've said this in the council chamber before, he who holds the gold makes the rules. I don't care who you looking at, I'm telling you, behind the scene, he who makes the gold holds the rule, makes the rules. Those who don't have it got to live by it. So, I would say, anytime, I remember when we were fought, Ms. President, just a couple months ago, and they said, I can't believe you decided to give yourself a raise, which was the furthest from the truth, because it's the next council and all of us got to work for it. But, how in the world can you not advocate for what you advocated for yourself? There's no way. And this council moved, before we even talked about a raise for the council, we talked about incrementally raising the minimum wage. Now, I will tell you this in closing, 'cause I'm gonna stay within our minutes, I, I saw some of my colleagues looking at the time. There is, since we're talking about the Bible, there is a scripture that says that the poor will be with you always. Reverend Icke had a saying when I was growing up, but the best thing he can do is not be one of them. And I'm telling you, as leaders, it's hard to be a leader if you say you're a leader and not look like a dictator. The dictator always live above their people, while their people struggle, the dictator lives comfortably. But, if you're not advocating for poor people, I question your leadership. That's not a throwout, that's just the truth. I don't have anything else to say about that, I'm with Counselor Tyson. I'm gonna call for the question, and we're gonna go ahead and move forward. And whatever the legislature does, be rest assured, it was the waterworks on one vote. We talking about minimum wage, that's another vote.
Sewer.
If we're sewer, if you're not careful, it's gonna always be some type of intervention. Only thing I say is that the voters gotta stop having amnesia, and we got to remember, how often do you see your legislators while they're legislating on your behalf? Thank you, Ms. President.
Counselor Abbott, your second time.
Yes, and hopefully last. I appreciate everyone's passion about this issue, and I, I understand, and I'm in agreement that we need to increase the minimum wage. But, this ordinance, listen to what it says. "Any employer that fails to pay the minimum wage required under this chapter shall be required to pay the employee the unpaid wages together with an additional two times that amount as liquidated damages." Now, this is gonna happen tomorrow, y'all. "Any employee who has paid less than the minimum wage established under this ordinance may bring a civil cause of action against his or her employer for the full amount of wages due from the employer in any court of competent jurisdiction, and upon prevailing, shall be awarded any appropriate le, legal and equitable relief," and it goes on and on and on. Now, we have got to modify this thing before we pass it. You know, the, just verbally saying we have options is not enough. We need to pass an ordinance that actually says what we mean to say, and that's not what we're doing here. I'm sure everybody read the ordinance back when we passed it the first time. But, if we're going to make this thing go into effect on tomorrow morning, well, I guess tonight at midnight, then we need to modify this so that we're not putting all of these businesses in a legal quagmire and causing them to be in trouble immediately when they haven't had time to do anything. Now, one business just emailed me and said he'll have to raise his wages by twenty-five hundred dollars a month, and that that's gonna have to come out of somewhere. So, he says he'll probably raise his prices. Well, and that's fine, but tomorrow is too soon to put these businesses in Birmingham under this section, I think it's three, enforcement and remedies. We need to modify this before we pass it.
Counselor Rafferty, your second time.
Actually, and I wanted to clarify also on the wait, uh, waitstaff issue on this. When I waited tables in college, it was two oh one an hour. And obviously, there's little incremental adjustments over, over the time with it. But, I never, I was told that, flat out, that was two oh one an hour, and then the tips. So, I was, so what I'm looking for that's not in this, in this legislation, is a mandate for the employers to educate that their, their waitstaff has to calculate their wages every single week to ensure that they got minimum wage under the new ordinance, and if not, then they have to make those adjustments and add to it. Well, that's a terrific burden to put on a waiter or waitress, to have to calculate their own wages every single week to make sure that their, that their ta, that their, um, tips, as well as their hourly wage, equals minimum wage. But, I don't see any of that in this ordinance. So, as far as I'm concerned, as it stands, there, there's an intrinsic portion of this that is missing. And actually, I'd rather remove it completely and they get minimum wage plus tips, not some substandard piece of, 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 uh, pro, uh, revenue, and then, and then filter in tips that they may or may not receive to begin with.
Um, Counselor Scales, your second time.
No, no, mine's been up for a while. Yeah, I put mine up when she was speaking the first time.
Go ahead, Counselor.
Okay, I appreciate that. Maybe we need to do as Dr. King did, is start a Poor People's Campaign. You know, we get activists who come here every day about stuff that really doesn't matter. This seem like to me that every organization we got ought to be campaigning to raise the minimum wage. That's something that we can get around, and I think if we did that, then, um, if folk who did not support that, you know, y'all talk all the time, I hear folk in the, you know, the street committees, one of the most powerful committees you could, you know, ever encounter, and the street committees say, if the council don't do what it needs to do, they gonna sweep the council. Well, what about the legislatures? You know, I mean, they do work for the citizens of Birmingham and Jefferson County. And so, if, if, uh, if we buy, uh, Bernie Sanders, Senator Sanders', uh, comments about the poor and the rich, it means that we got more folk on the bottom than we got on the top. So, then, it was, it, you know, it would, um, you know, it, it would certainly speak to us, uh, getting some candidates who gonna support the minimum wage, just simple as that. But, I, I hear your passion, uh, Counselor Tyson, and I don't know when you've been more passionate, uh, than I've heard today, and on point, because I think we just take for granted that, um, that everybody got a meal on their table, and they don't. You know, I know we feeding people in various countries, and that's good. You know, I know we feeding people in various countries and that's good. But there are children and families who are starving every day. Every day in this city, every day in this county. And if some are not in school, they won't get a meal. I do know that. And having been one who, you know, did vacation Bible school, that's why I cook whole meals. I didn't do hot dogs and hamburgers. I cooked whole meals because I realized that those kids who are at school would not get a meal until the next Monday. And so I really want to support this today. And I think I said early on, I gave the caveat that we could amend anything that we passed today. And so if we do it and we need to make those adjustments as Counselor Rafferty has articulated, then we can do that in the interim. But I think there needs to be a clear message that we want to do that. And then if the legislators decide they want to do something different, then that's fine. But we need to do what's right about the people where we sit here. We can't control that, that they do in the state legislature. But we can control what we do here. And I just believe that, you know, some are gonna run next year. So that'd be a good time to make some changes, I would think. So, but I don't think because you're a hell hostage that you don't scream, that you don't kick. I think you do that. Because you got, you know, it's just a self-preservation kind of issue that even though you might have your foot on my neck, I can still, you know, fight. You know, because that's just a human instinct to do. It's innate. And so I think we need to move on this today. And any issues we got after that, I think we amend it to do that. Ms. President, that will be my last comment. Oh, somebody said they running 18. Well, I mean, the owner of the elephant remembers. And so we just be elephants. And remember those who did not support the minimum wage. Simple as that. I'm a citizen too. I vote too. May not vote for y'all, but I do vote. Okay? Yeah. Thank you.
Counselor Scales?
Thank you, Ms. President. But just for public consumption, please, sir. I just want to bring the public up to snuff in terms of why this is even coming up today. It is being said it is political posturing, but it's not. The council actually acted upon this item. I want to say, was that August? And I know it was last year, Ms. President, but it was somewhere around August. And what the council initially attempted to do to work with the business community was to have it in increments that it would take effect this year. They'd bring it up to 810 or something like that. Was it 850? And then the following subsequent year. So we tried to do that. But what happened was some of our lawmakers that this council met with the Jefferson County delegation. In fact, the person who is sponsoring this bill was a part of that meeting. And no one said that they were gonna bring this up in the legislature. So what the council is doing is being proactive for its citizenry, which is very important. I keep hearing the business community, "And you matter, business community, but I was elected by people." That's a big difference. And we want your business. We pass authorizations every week where this city is doing business with the business community. We're doing it every week. In fact, we got someone here just today that was on consent. So our issue is not that. But we can't forget the people who brought us to the dance. If you forget the citizens who elected you, then you're not a voice, you're a puppet. And that's what it is. This is only coming up today because the legislature took an action that basically passed the House to restrict citizens and this city, any city in the state of Alabama. As a matter of fact, with the bill reason, I was talking to Mr. President about this. The bill basically said we could never raise minimum wage. That's what you need to know. And what needs to happen is when these legislators get ready to run for office, everything that they've done, you need to ask him. I'd like to have it in writing. See, that's what I do at my neighborhood meetings. You don't go by what I say, you go by what you read. I respect your intelligence enough to let you read. You all need to get a copy of this bill. And I think, Mr. President, it'd be very fiduciary of us to provide the public by way of the media, to provide them a copy of the bill. This bill prohibits the council that after we make this, whatever we gonna do today, you cannot raise the minimum wage ever without the state legislature. That's what the public needs to know. So when we make statements, we gotta also make sure that they are factual. And I'm telling you, I tell people all the time. They say, "Well, you know, Counselor Scales, you one that seem to can't be bought." I say, "Yeah, I've been poor." I keep telling y'all, my mama and I were poor. We were so poor, we couldn't afford the OR. So you talking about a poor person who understand poor people's needs. And it's not enough to be vocal. You're gonna have to put some action to what you're saying. Otherwise, we might as well shut down the city and start doing what is in the best interest of the business community only and tell you don't go to the polls. Because guess what? It's the business community that's actually paying some folk to go to the polls too. That's why they advocate for their interests. And we gotta start having a balance between both of them. Where we are also advocating for the needs of your citizenry and then you're working with the needs of the business. But when one outweighs the other, that's why when you reading every other day about somebody getting killed and you wonder why folks are robbing people, that's not your answer to crime. I'm telling you, that's what creates it though. Because you don't have any money. And whereas though some people say, "I'll go and sack groceries, I'll wash cars, I do whatever I need to do in order to make it." There are some other people, because in a poor community, you get poor education. That poor education is gonna make you make poor decisions. Thank you, Ms. President.
Hey, President, I would like to make sure that they understand that the Black Caucus, the Democrats, did support this. It was the Republicans, the one that voted against it 100%. Just wanted to make sure they know that.
Thank you. And we, that, I'll close with this. We have, you know, we've, you all know, we've seen a lot of coverage, received a lot of coverage from, from both, of course, the local, local media, but also the national media. And in particular, New York Times. And, you know, something that was, I thought, very interesting that they talked about among everything else that they were speaking about was the fact that the leader of our city said that we need to try to work out a compromise with the legislature on this issue. Now, he has been serving as, in an official elected capacity longer than any of us sitting up here. And knows full well that the legislature that we have down in Montgomery right now has no intentions of working out any compromise. Now, you all voted for all of us, including our mayor, to represent the citizens. And at some point, you've got to stop trying to be a statesman and be a representative of these people. Because at the end of the day, these are the people that we are here for. We not here for Montgomery or anyone else. These folks down in Montgomery right now are debating this issue today in the Senate. They will be discussing it today if they haven't already started. And I'm not gonna say again what I've been saying other than this. This issue does remind me of the situation that took place back on the University of Alabama's campus when then Governor Wallace stood in the schoolhouse door. And what was he doing back then, along with our state? Just trying to stand in the way of education and access to education. Here we are a little more than 50 years later and our legislators down there are doing the exact same thing, standing in the way of a livable wage for our citizens. There are over 40,000 people in the city of Birmingham alone that are at minimum wage. 47% of our citizens, of our children, are at or below poverty in the city of Birmingham. So there's not much that we can do with trying to, there's only a few limited things that we can do. We're trying to really help our community and help the people. This is one of them. And this is what we were elected to do. I believe that any changes that we need to make moving forward with this ordinance, we can do it. As we've already discussed, we just did it a few weeks ago with Uber. We did that where we made some changes to it and we know that there may be other changes coming with other ordinances that have been brought before us. We know that we can make those changes. We are the legislative body. But the people in our community need someone to stand up for them. They elected us to be their voice. They chose us to come down here. We didn't choose these seats. They chose us. And so it's our responsibility. And look, I'm gonna tell you right now, I'm not, I don't make decisions to get reelected, okay? I'm not concerned about what's gonna happen in 2017. I'm concerned about what's gonna happen today. And I'm concerned about what's gonna happen to our citizens. That's what I'm concerned about. And I certainly hope that we continue to move forward and fight for the citizens that we were elected to serve. We're ready to vote, Mr. Clerk.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I would like to ask the Law Department about this Enforcement and Remedies section. The one that says that as of tomorrow, the businesses will be charged two times the amount of unpaid wages if they can't change all their bookkeeping by tomorrow. So, Law Department?
Tom, before you speak, Mr. President,
Hold on, Ms. Mayor.
May I respond?
Just one minute, Ms. Mayor.
Okay. Go ahead, Tom.
Well, I don't think, based on conversations with the people who are responsible for publishing this, and I think you all understand that ordinances and resolutions don't become effective until they're published. It can't be published by tomorrow. So that's all I have to say about that.
Okay, so this thing won't go into effect anyway. So you're saying that this enforcement section is not for me to worry about?
Well, it'll go into effect when published. But as far as the date of its effectiveness, it'll be that date it is published.
Mr. Mayor, go ahead. I'm sorry.
Yes, Mr. President, Counselors. I understand that the question has come up with, where does the mayor stand? And the statement was made that the mayor basically has said, "Let's try to work things out with the state legislature." The state legislature does not control minimum wage from a national standpoint. And what I've always said is that it would be wonderful if our Congress would be able to get together with the president to work that issue out. But unfortunately, that's not gonna happen. The president called myself, along with members of the African-American Mayors Association, to ask us to come forward and put forward an initiative to look at those municipalities that had the power to institute minimum wage in and of themselves to go forward and do that. We've had a number of meetings. I see Mr. Ladarius Hilliard. When I got back from Washington, DC, I had conversation with Mr. Hilliard and others within his organization about moving forward to expand the opportunity for an increase in minimum wage. I agree with what Counselor Tyson has indicated that those individuals who receive that income, put it right back into the economy. I've heard this argument in years past that the increase in minimum wage causes people to be laid off. It causes a disruption in the economic health of this country. And none of that has been proven to be true. When minimum wage is instituted, those individuals who receive it go about the business of trying to improve the quality of their life. And I'm very much supportive of that. And Mr. Hilliard, you can speak for the fact that you and I did have that conversation about minimum wage. So for anyone to characterize it other than my full support of minimum wage increase, that's totally false. The issue is, how do you go about that process? Now, I have not been a part of the council's deliberation. You all have had meetings. You all have had press conferences where I was not invited to participate or even ask what my thoughts were about this council. That's fine. The council is in a legislative process now to make a determination as to where it stands. And whatever the council decide, that's the council's decision. Just wanted to make that point. Thank you.
Chief Tyson and Hoyt?
That's what I'm saying, to get the floor to make that motion.
Go ahead, Tyson.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Ready to vote, Mr. Clerk. Roll call.
Councilmember Abbott?
No.
Councilmember Hoyt?
Indubitably, yes.
Councilmember Lundee?
Yes.
Councilmember Parker?
Yes.
President Tim Robertson is out. Councilmember Rafferty?
No.
Councilmember Scales?
Absolutely.
Councilmember Tyson? President Austin?
Yes. That item passes. Next item, Mr. Clerk.
President Austin, can I make a statement right quick? Because I wanted to get that vote in.
Go ahead.
Black women have been underpaid for years. So they might have paid you 2:01. But as a black woman, they paid me 1:50 and I am older than you.
And I will say this real quick. Mr. Clerk, will you make sure that that go ahead and get certified? The mayor did say he's in support of it, so we need to have that on his desk to have it signed today.
We'll have that done, Mr. President, but I'm still waiting on a reply from the news. That's all we have to deal with, the times on the news. And we can't, you know, dictate that part of it.
I got it.
Okay.
Just make sure we get the mayor to sign it. Thank you. All right, next item.
Where would you like to go, sir?
Back to the first item.
That'd be 13, I guess. Item 13 is on page five. An ordinance incorporating Section 11-43-56 Code of Alabama, 1975, management and control of finances and property of municipality except as otherwise provided in the title. The council should have the management and control of the finances and all property, real and personal belonging to the city or town.
You have a move and a second?
Move aye.
Second. Lundee, Scales, Counselor Scales?
Yes, Ms. President. With your permission, please, because I know that the Law Department initially had some issues. Those issues have now been resolved. And if Attorney Rubio can go ahead and speak to this item as it has been printed, definitely, let me just say, as he's coming, that there have been some issues, obviously, with some things that the council, in terms of our duties, wanted to make sure that we could do the best job possible for the citizens that we serve. And so Attorney Rubio, if you could go ahead and explain this item. As you all can tell, there is an attachment in the back where the state law actually gives the council this authority.
All right, so this came from the Governmental Affairs Committee. And what this item does is incorporates state statute into the municipal code. It basically states that the mayor would make available to the council any item, any services, anything that is necessary for the council to perform its duties. That's what it does.
Okay. That's all we have, Mr. President.
All right. We're ready to vote. That item passes. Two no votes and one abstention. Next item.
Item 14. An ordinance establishing the general fund and capital fund budget reporting process policy.
Counselor, we have a move and a second?
Move aye.
Second.
Lundee, Scales, Counselor Scales?
Yes, sir. On this particular item, this was as the council had a retreat back in March. Chad Mitchell, who's done an excellent work, he mentioned this to us during it. And I know that the majority of the council was present, even the mayor was present. And all that this does is that the state law allows for the council to be able to receive the budget before May 20th with the intent for us to be able to pass the budget by June, excuse me, July 20. to pass the budget by June, uh, excuse me, July one. So, Mr. Mitchell, if you can elaborate in terms of what you have proposed to the council that most of us agreed with, the, the council is just now seeing this in the form of an ordinance.
Well, Counselor, well, basically, this ordinance outlines that, uh, the council will approve the ordinance to move the date of them receiving the operating and capital budget earlier than what is stated in the mayor council. It currently states that we receive it on May twentieth, this will make it effective of May first of each fiscal year. Also, there's, uh, according to law, that we are establishing a, a process where different departments, well, really the mayor and all his designated would come to a specific committee to discuss the process of operating and capital needs of each department. This is just to help the council get a breast of what's going on, so they can make a very informed decision when they do receive the budget from the mayor. So, um, that's all outlined, is in the ordinance with the noticing process to each department, our department head, or the mayor, and each committee has a different department that that department would report to that committee also.
Thank you, Chaz, and let me just say to the council, what the intent or the spirit of the Governmental Affairs Committee was to do was that because we do appreciate the work of those who work with us, uh, in this particular case would be Mr. Mitchell, uh, when we had this retreat, one of the things that we were talking about was strengthening our communication between the mayor's office and the council. This would actually allow us to be able to do that because whether it be the mayor or whoever that the mayor designates to attend your respective committee meetings, you are now beginning to get more information in terms of the needs, whether it be operational or capital, and then when the budget comes and you receive it on the first, May first of each, uh, fiscal year, it allows you, just like Mr. Mitchell said, to be able to make an informed decision along the way. For example, we just had an item this morning involving Public Works. Had Public Works already, as a department, been meeting with the respective committees, then the committee could also share that information along with the council, so then I wouldn't have to be out here asking on the dais, "Well, how many, what is this for, why is this, uh, particular vehicle broken down, what are we doing?" The committee itself is then empowered to be able to do its job and to function at a high level of excellence, uh, and so that's what this ordinance is about on behalf of the Governmental Affairs Committee.
Counselor Abbott?
Uh, yeah, I just wanted to ask Mr. Mitchell, where'd you go? Um, you said that these, uh, the, the departments, or the, I guess the mayor or the mayor's representative or the department would come before the committees. Will this be the same information that's given during the budget hearings where all the departments come and tell what their needs are, or will this be more information or different information?
This will be more information. It's, the information that's provided during the budget hearing is something that they submitted, or been talking to the mayor's administration throughout the year, so that same information will be given to the committee throughout the year, not just during the budget process, since the budget process is a twelve-month process anyway. Uh, this will allow, like Ms. Scales saying, if Public Works would've came to the, the committee they were supposed to go to, to let them know that, "Hey, we're running out of money," let's say back in December or October, the council already know that that was already in the hopper, and when it came up to a vote, questions are already being answered, and then the council put it up, up and down vote.
Okay, thank you.
We're ready to vote, Ms. Clerk. One second, please. Lundey, Scales?
All right. That vote should be up.
That item passes with one abstention from Counselor Parker and, uh, one no vote. Next item?
Item sixteen. An ordinance approving and authorizing the mayor to execute a redevelopment agreement in the ground lease with Urban Community Development Consortium LLC, on which Urban Community Development Consortium will undertake the development of approximately thirty-eight acres of property adjoining the Birmingham Crossplex along Bessemer Road, for uses which may include dining, retail, entertainment facilities, hotel, apartments, medical clinic, professional office building, and an outpatient center. Urban Community Development Consortium will lease the property from the city for a term of fifty years, the right to extend the lease for nine additional terms of five years each, and will pay base rent to the city at the, I'm sorry, that should be for the first five years in the amount of five thousand dollars per year, and six, in the year six through twenty-five in the amount of seven thousand five hundred dollars per year, and in years twenty-six through fifty in the amount of ten thousand dollars per year, plus percentage rent equal to five percent of the gross receipts from Urban Community Development Consortium's subleasing the property to various tenants. The annual base rent to be paid to the city for the extension terms will increase by five thousand dollars for each such five-year extension term. The city in support of the project will agree to subordinate, is subordinate its fee simple ownership interest in the property to the mortgages of lenders providing financing for the development of various parcels, and will provide up to five million eight hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars for infrastructure improvements to the property.
Move aye.
Second.
Hoyt, um, Abbott, Counselor Lundey?
Yes, Mr. President, um, this item was brought to the agenda without, uh, going through due process in Economic Development Budget and Finance, I'd like to request that it be sent back to committee.
You have, is that a motion?
Yes.
Move a second?
Who's that?
A second.
Mr. President?
Counselor Hoyt?
Yes, well, let, let me, uh, first thank the, the chairman, uh, Budget and Finance Development Department Development, because he's an outstanding chairman, um, and we have vetted this, uh, for the last couple of months, quite frankly, and, um, and I realize that we're not gonna all agree on everything, but, um, it is before us, um, we really want this to move, um, and a further delay, uh, I don't think would benefit us. I think we move it, uh, a ground lease is something that I suggested a long time ago, and, uh, the administration has agreed, that probably is one of the best options we have with respect to that, and let me put it in perspective, we made an investment, almost sixty million dollars in the Crossplex, and what has been suggested of late is to do a conveyance of the property, but why would you give somebody control of the out parcels when you made a sixty million dollar, nearly sixty million dollar investment, uh, in the Crossplex itself? And so, if you sell it outright, then you lose control in terms of what kinds of development, because you can't tell for what to do with their property once they bought it, you know, and grant you, um, you can put in place some covenants, but not even our zoning is enforced. So, I doubt very seriously if the covenants would be enforced as a result of, of those, um, covenants that might be offered. So, I just believe that we control what happens, uh, every step of the way, when we do a ground lease, because the council has to prove that. You know, some of the questions we had before is whether or not the city will have some oversight and that, uh, any change order would come back to the city, uh, we addressed that in this document, it's here, and so, I really want us, uh, to move forward, um, I'm anxious, I hadn't been anxious, but I believe we got the right person, uh, to deliver what we've asked, uh, them to do, and the person of, uh, Mr. Navis, Mas, Masbit and his company, and so, I would ask respectfully that my colleagues, we voted up or down, um, and I can live with that, but I do believe we need to move on this item.
All right, let me, there's a, uh, motion, and it's been seconded to, uh, refer this back to committee, 'cause it is not properly before us, it's still in the committee, so we need to take a vote on that before we move on and have any more discussion about the item. Mr. Clerk?
Oh, Mr. President, can we not ask a question about why it's still stuck in committee?
Yeah, the, it's to the motion, yes.
Yeah, the motion, of course, yeah.
You, you speaking to the?
Yeah, so, yeah, what I wanna know is, like, where are we in this process? Why are we at an impasse? Because this thing's been in committee forever, or it seems like it, it may not have been forever, it may just have been several weeks.
Sure, I'm glad you asked, um, you know, there was a discussion around varying options for the land, um, and the discussions, uh, around those options, uh, never continued because Mr. Patton decided to bring it to the agenda. He told us in, uh, Economic Development Budget and Finance that it would be on the agenda for today. He never allowed for us to take a vote, um, we never talked and weighed out all the options around outright sale versus lease versus a hybrid option where we could finance one or two or three buildings and then look to possibly convey the property. Um, and on top of that, things like fair market value for the land, whether you're gonna lease the land or buy the land, we don't even know what the land is worth, so we don't know if getting four hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars for the land is a decent offer, because we don't know. Uh, has anyone ever done a traffic study? If you've gone to the summit and had to try to get in and out of the summit, uh, imagine the second most traveled piece of property being the Crossplex having those same issues. So, we've not done, we've not done a market study, we've not done our due diligence around fair market value, we've not done a traffic study, and then if you look at the term of the, the lease, it's ninety-five years. None of us, or our children, will be around in ninety-five years, so why would we enter into an agreement that is so long, even if we're gonna do a lease? So, s- those are some of the things we need to hash out in committee, not up on the dais, and I think the committee process was aborted, uh, you know, when Mr. Patton decided he'd put it on the agenda.
That's right.
Okay, and you said ninety-five years, this says fifty.
Yeah.
Which one is it?
There, there, there's a fifty-year front lease with nine five-year options.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
All right. Are you, is it to the motion? Go ahead.
Uh, now, I had, I talked to, um, to Lisa Cooper and some more people, 'cause I actually missed that meeting where y'all was discussing it, um, but I thought it was a traffic study done in a, um, uh, the property was all of that, can Lisa Cooper come in and, uh, uh, Mr. Patton?
Yes, ma'am, what's your, your question?
It's what?
About the, uh, traffic study and how much the property is worth, I thought that was done.
Nope. You can ask? You'd like for Ms., you'd like for her to respond?
Please.
Yes, ma'am.
Good afternoon, Counselors, as it relates to a traffic study, I don't believe a traffic study was done, a market study was done several years ago by Block Global for this particular project.
So, uh, is this the procedure when you, uh, get ready to do this, is to do a traffic study, and why it hadn't been done?
Uh, Counselor, a traffic study, and Greg Dawkins, the Director of Traffic and Engineering, can also weigh in, this doesn't necessarily speak to, uh, any particular project of this size, this was the, uh, that's one of the things that down the road, I think that if it's deemed necessary, but as it relates to developing this property, I don't think the traffic study, one way or the other, has any bearing on this. I think that the market study that was done back in two thousand twelve, that spoke to the, what the neighborhood wanted, what the counselor for the district wanted, the amenities, the types of, uh, tenants that they wanted out there, the vision that they wanted to see out there for this specific property, that's what is, it relates to this project.
And the price on, uh, the, how much the property was worth, I thought I seen that in that study too.
Uh, back in, uh, with the, uh, with the, uh, district plan that the, uh, Block Global did, yes, it talked about the approximate value. Of course, as you know, the value of each parcel is gonna be contingent upon when we recruit the specific tenant, we're going to make sure that we get the highest and best use, and of course, therefore, the highest and best value for this property, parcels as they're sold.
The fifty years and plus the nine and the five, is that the usual thing that y'all do for, uh, projects of this size?
Yes, ma'am, it allows us to have that flexibility with the renewal, so that we can make sure that all things being equal after fifty years, it gives you a chance to see the type of tenant that you can bring in, the type of revenue, more importantly, that is gonna be generated for each specific tenant. We want, again, recruit and bring into that area a hotel, entertainment, commercial tenants, uh, its proposed amphitheater, those are the types of tenants that we're looking in, developers, we're looking to propose for this project.
And, uh, and you know, I had a problem with the, uh, you know, when, when they were saying giving way to prop, you know, giving their properties, so I had a problem with that, and I see now you're talking about leasing the property.
Correct.
And I'm asking questions because I wanna make sure I do a right vote, I wanna make sure my vote is right, and my vote is valuable, and I ain't on, and I don't vote on teams, I vote on issues, and I just wanna make sure that's clear, and I wanna, can I talk, can I ask this ma'am, y'all know her name, what's his name right there?
Miss Dawkins.
Greg Dawkins.
Mr. Dawkins, can you, uh, answer about the ro, about the traffic study?
Several years ago, there was a preliminary study done for the intersection that, on US eleven or Bessemer Road at the old Kitty Land entrance?
Mm-hmm.
It was just a preliminary study to look at some upgrades and things, and do an application with Aldoc to upgrade that intersection, but a full developmental site study, I, I haven't seen one in, in just probably or primarily because you can't do a full in-depth study without knowing a good majority of the tenants that are coming in to know what kinda traffic they're gonna, going to generate, you'd just be taking a, a pure shot in the dark, and it wouldn't be an accurate study.
So, the one that I seen was the, the one with the Kitty Land?
Right, yes.
That was, and that was some, eh, 'cause I seen it was back, it was back way back.
Several years ago, yes, ma'am, to do, to do some improvements there.
So, when you did the traffic study for two eighty, right, was it two eighty?
Yeah.
Two eighty, was it done before or after, was it, eh, and was it because of the area, the, the high volume traffic you already knew that was on there? 'Cause that's more like a, like a, uh, a freeway more than it is a, a business street like this, 'cause this Third Avenue still have houses and residents on it.
The, the, the traffic study, you're talking about for the summit?
Uh-huh.
Those, those traffic studies are, are done by the developer, we ask the developer to do the traffic study, once they get an idea of what, what tenants they're gonna put in there, and as, as part of their development, we'll show ac, the access points and how they're gonna ingress and egress from their, from the site and from the facility. So, I guess, you bring the, the, the developers usually brought in, and then once he starts saying this is, this is who's gonna come in there, then that's when we request the study, and they do the study, so we can see how they're gonna get the, get the cars and the people in and out.
In and out, and that's the purpose of the traffic study, actually, to see how you go m- maneuver the traffic around, and, and I seen where they was already building like little sidewalks and, and little driveways on Third Avenue going into the Crossplex.
Got a new entrance.
Is that a new, that's a new entrance? Do you do that before you build, before we sell the property? Uh, uh, 'cause that was a regular draw, entrance way anyway, wasn't it?
Counselor Tyson, we really, you, the question should be just bait, just straight to the motion, 'cause there's a motion right now, and we really getting into more of the project, instead of, um, just to the motion, I'm just letting, just so you know.
Okay.
So, we, we have a motion before us?
I have, yeah, I wanna speak to it.
Is it to the motion?
Yes.
Mr. Patton, go ahead.
Me, or Mr. Patton?
Counselor Scales in there, Mr. Patton.
Okay, all right, but...
To the motion.
No, I'm gonna stick to the motion, I promise. But I, I did wanna say this, uh, Mr. President, because we had an issue, uh, or item, not an issue, earlier that came up, and because we strayed away last week, I'm for a team council, whatever that dichotomy is, but it's composed of nine, that's why this week I didn't even bring up the person that I wanted to see on the library board, because I was told, "Hey, Counselor, we need to respect the committee process." That's the only thing I would ask in, in this particular setting, because your que- That's the only thing I would ask in, in this particular setting, because your questions, Councillor Tyson, are actually legitimate. But when we start asking questions on the DA's, that's because the committee, for the most part, that means that these are things that need to be brought up in that setting. So, when this item is brought before us, and, and let me just say this, Mr. President, I'm definitely not for giving away no land, I, I'm, I'm, I'm still sticking to that. I don't like the idea of ninety-five years. And so, that's a question for another day that I'd like to ask the Law Department. You know, is that legal for us to even enter into these lengthy agreements? Is that even, and see, they shaking their head, they know I'm talking the truth too. If something's wrong with that, we need to ask that. So, it ain't the, 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 no, no, Mr. Ben, I don't even need, I'm sticking to the motion. I'm just telling you, Mr. President, that part of the contract, I'm never gonna be comfortable with. Does that mean we'll never get, get an opportunity to speak to it again or any subsequent council in the very near future? So, that, that's that, I'm trying to respect the committee process. I was on, on pins and needles this morning, but, but I, I went on because I'm trying to be respectful. So, you know, that's that, but if we can, let me be quiet, 'cause I was about to say, that ninety-five workout, it'd be something different.
I had my, Mr. Patton?
Let me kinda clear the air of a couple of things. There was a meeting. We were given an ultimatum, the administration was given an ultimatum. One or two things are gonna happen, either you withdraw this and come back with something else. Now, either you withdraw this today, or we're gonna come back with something else. Mr. Horton, if I recall, you were in that meeting. I said, so you're saying if we don't withdraw this, you're gonna vote it down? The answer was yes. My response was, if you recall, Mr. Horton, then the item will be placed on the next agenda. If you recall, Mr. Horton, I at no time have the authority to stop a committee from voting any kind of way. I don't have that kind of power, although people say I do, I don't have that kind of power. So, Jarvis Patton didn't have anything to do with whether or not the committee voted or didn't vote. Respect to traffic, Mr. Dawkins, what's getting ready to happen out there right now? Aren't they getting ready to ride in the street? Aren't they getting ready to have a turn lane out there? Aren't they preparing for this, Mr. Dawkins? Mr. Dawkins, if, Mr. Chairman, could you respond to that?
Yes, sir, that's, that's correct. The, the improvements there at the entrance of Kitty Land, they're gonna be doing some improvements, doing a turn lane and, as well as turn lanes into the, the, the crossplex facility. So, yes, and that was, that was the study that, that was talked about.
Thank you, Mr. Dawkins.
Councillor Horton?
Yes, thank you.
To the motion.
To the motion, sir. Well, to the motion. We have, not only did Hersha Hamilton Group do the market study, but when I first got in office, we sat down and did a strategic plan for District Eight in terms of what we wanted that development to look like. And through that, I have shared that, matter of fact, I even commissioned a bustin' study, which is a psych analysis of Byron Power and those kind of thing. That was done as a, as a premise to see what kind of industry we could actually attract to that when I chaired Economic Development. I did that. And today, we are closer to making this a reality than we ever been. The traffic study would only dictate if there was some development out there. I mean, to get a true traffic count, you would have to develop something. And quite frankly, the market value would, would, would augment as, as buildings, as entities are recruited to that area. You know, what you paid, paid, you know, when we didn't have anything, and you were the first person to put something on that property, now we got something to compare to. You know, we got the crossplex, but better yet, the development itself, the out of parcel, which consists of commercial, retail, those kinds of things, will be determined when that is built. And that's, that's only time that, that, that market, fair market value comes into play. You know, and, and so, I'm, I'm really wanting to move on this, we can vote it up or down, but I wanna, you know, I wanna move it. We got a lot of folk waiting on crossplex. The longer we wait, you know, the longer people are gonna become frustrated that we are still saying we gonna do and that we don't do anything. And I really want this to, to pass, I respect the chairman, you know, and I, I do. He's a, matter of fact, one of the best chairmans we've ever had. Because he understands finance, he understands, you know, economic development, he understands workforce development. He, he gets it, and, and he's helped us quite a bit. And, and, and we may not all agree, you know, philosophically, but I think we can agree in principle that this needs to happen. Nobody wants this more than the folk who live in that community. And nobody has been a, an advocate, champion for this than Stephen Horton. And for the public consumption, the whole idea about redeveloping crossplex, now, it used to be Fair Park, I mean, what is it? Fair Park, Fair Park. Ms. Abbott was on this council when I came. And matter of fact, it took us about two years to get the, you were part of those discussions, took about two years to even decide that we wanted to tear it down and redevelop, 'cause they were talking about it had some civil rights significance. And I'm not trying to shortchange the civil rights significance, but I told them, let's take some pictures, and we're gonna put, dedicate a room, and we're gonna put all those pictures up. And that's what, and, and we can still celebrate civil rights and its history and all, as we do now with a museum and all. I said, but we need to tear this down, 'cause it's, I mean, it was a foregone conclusion that the fair had dropped off, nobody was racing out there, and, and all that noise was too much for the folk who lived in that community. And so, it was an opportunity for us to redevelop that, 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 that site. And so, I finally got my colleagues, I was vice president of the community, finally got my colleagues to say, hey, let's do it. Got the administration, your class, I guess it'd be your class, as the oldest, I mean, not the oldest, I mean, the senior, the senior member of the council. I'm the second senior.
You're the second senior.
Right. So, institutional knowledge is important. But I do believe, I respect the chairman, can't, can't overemphasize that, 'cause he's a great man. But I, I just want this project to move today, and I respect all the comments, but when you lease something... Okay, to the mo, I'm, I'm done, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Councillor Lundey?
Thank you, Mr. President. The typical commercial mortgage is a twenty-five-year mortgage, typically. We are allowing the developer a fifty-year management opportunity for this. Why does the developer need twenty-five additional years? With opportunities at forty-five more? The infrastructure was told to us that it was gonna be, I think, two million dollars initially. But they said it's gonna cost more because those are old numbers. Then we get back a rough estimate at five point eight million dollars that the city is going to have to do around infrastructure upgrade. So, you have five point eight million in infrastructure upgrade. You have an opportunity to manage this property four times as long as anyone else typically would. And then you have a developer who's never developed a mall, this, this type of shopping arrangement. And then you have the opportunity for us to have to put additional resources into something that the developer has no money in. We're not asking the developer to come in with it, now, he has sweat equity in the game, but he doesn't have skin in the game. So, the city takes on all the risk. The city is allowing the developer to go past the typical twenty-five-year mark to a fifty-year mark with forty-five years additional. The city is putting up five point eight million, and we all know, based on Negro Southern League Museum, based on Regent's Ballpark, and anything else, West Precinct, anything we've built, people have come back for twice what they've estimated. Because history tells us that you lowball the city, then you hit 'em with chain jolters. So, all I'm saying is, we, hey, I'm for the crossplex, please believe that. I get tired of going to Fulton Dell and anywhere else outside of these city limits, I need to go. But my job as Chair of Economic Development Budget and Finance is to do what is right by the church's money. And I'm telling you, this is not the deal we need to be voting on today. This deal still needs to be massaged, it still needs to be worked out, and in fact, I like the developer, I just think this is a bad deal for the constituents. That's all. We can do better. You know, we did appraisals of the property back when H.J. Russell had it, back when Block Global had it, where if someone appraised my house three years ago or five years ago, it would've praised lower than it praises today. So, I would love to give you the price for my house today that it cost seven years ago. I would love to do that, who wouldn't go for that deal? But I'm telling you guys, this is not the deal for us. It just doesn't make walking around sense. I know we smarter than this, am I the only one that sees this? And I'm cool if I'm by myself, 'cause I don't mind standing out by myself for what's right. Because, see, guess what, I'm gonna do what's right by the last, the loss, the left out, and the least of these. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, to the motion.
To the motion. Councillor Skiles, first, your second term, second time to the motion. Councillor Horton, your tenth time.
No, I'm, I'm, I'm through after this. The only thing that, that I will say is that I'm saying the comments are valid, but I want to also admit publicly, I was admonished on last week that we need to stick with what we said under this new paradigm, which is to stick with the committee process. A lot of this stuff that we're talking about out here on the DA's now should've been discussed in the committee meeting. And, and let me say this, truthfully, if, if everything that was asked for, because according to, and, and I know I had to miss a meeting because I was at school, but here's the deal, if we don't ask the right question, you don't get the right answer. That's not the way that you even go about a discussion, period. That's the reason why it's still in committee, is that when we don't ask certain questions, you only get the, the answers to the question you ask. Well, I'm not in the construction business, I'm not in the development business, just tell me the whole project in its totality. Then I'll have to try to figure it out. And I'm just saying, just speaking to the motion, I'm trying to stick with what you and this council said to me last week, not every council member, but particularly to you, Mr. President, who told me, councillor, after we made that library board appointment, we don't need to do that. I'm trying to respect that. And I, and then let me just say this for the record, and Councillor Horton has been on point about crossplex, period, even down to the fact there's no lights. So, there's no issue with me in terms of supporting something in a community I once lived in. But I'm still saying, Mr. President, either we're gonna respect the commi, I, I, I forwent my little feelings today. We're either gonna stick with, with the committee process or we're not. And the only other thing that I will say is this, Mr. President, and I'm, and I'm, I'm still speaking to the motion. I said it then, I'm gonna say it now, 'cause I understand you, Councillor Tyson, I said the same thing, that my vote matters. And I'm gonna tell you something, I'm not gonna ever agree to nothing for ninety-five years, I'm just not. Already, 'cause to me, that is what has gotten the city in the shape it's in now, that we keep talking about folks having opportunities, but a ninety-five-year agreement just disenfranchised any kind of other participation, because this, it is what it is, it's ninety-five years. So, with that having said, is not to discredit, I'm not into that, but I am saying that Horton has been very vocal about his, his district, and he should have been a strong advocate. I'm only talking about, Mr. President, either, you know, 'cause outside of that, then Skiles gonna be, start sticking alone, and y'all just gonna be voting against me, 'cause I'm gonna start saying, well, how, why does it have to be in committee? Now, I'm trying to respect that, because that's what you got on me about last week, and, and I'm just trying to stick with the program for team council.
Thank you. Councillor Horton?
Thank you.
This, to the, to the motion, and this your third time?
Yes, well, and, and I'm a member of the choir. But I would have to direct every song. We have vetted this, and if we hadn't, then I wouldn't be comfortable today. I would not be. And we made some adjustments, we've asked the administration to change how to report, you know, to just to try to safeguard ourselves. I'm the one who first brought up the issue with respect to the Regent's Park. I'm the one who brought up that issue. Nobody up here was, how, how'd it end it louder than me? You know, I don't work for them. But that was a travesty, travesty. We have since put language in place. Matter of fact, the government committee that the councilwoman chairs was an idea that I had, that I shared with the president, and that he implemented, because I think if we're gonna change how we do business, then it has to be done right by ordinance, and we've done that, we're attempting to do that, we did some of that today. Because I just believe that you let that govern that process. You know, and you just can't sign on to committed stuff when you wanna sign on to it. You know, either you're gonna be that across the board, 'cause I've been up here long enough to know. We've had stuff in committee, but I wasn't part of the fabulous five, and guess what? They, they went right on with it. They went right on with it, I've been here long enough to know that and have seen it, even with, with, with this president's leadership. So, I'm, you know, and, and listen, and then I didn't complain. You know, I raised my issue then, when I had to at that particular point in time, but I didn't, you know, I didn't cry. You know, big boys don't cry for the projects. You know, we just get even. That's why we do that. But, but I do respect the chairman, I just wanna emphasize that, he knows that. But we have a difference in, in principle when it comes to this issue, that's all. You know, 'cause philosophy changes, and it's predicated on one's interpretation of that.
Then I have a point of clarity.
I'm talking. Now, you know, don't interrupt me, I ain't interrupt you. I didn't.
I actually thought you were finished, councillor.
I wasn't finished.
Okay, well, then I apologize.
I will say to the chairman, thank you, Mr. Chairman, when I'm finished. That's generally what I do, isn't it? I'm a creature of habit, thank you. But I just don't like this whole notion that we hadn't vetted, we hadn't gone through this document, because we have. There's an email trail that dictates all of that. And I'm telling you that we've done that, and I hear some other councils, and y'all gonna do whatever you wanna do. Okay, I don't control no votes up here, but my own. But I'm telling you, as one who's been a watchdog for the city's dollars, and I ain't just get that way when things change, I've been that way. I've always been that way, my voice speaks to that. Joseph Bryan wrote enough articles about Horton and his disagreement and how we do business in the city. So, it speaks to that, I don't sit up here quietly. I voice my opinion, and I'm telling you, and I want the citizen to know, that we done vetted this, all I know to do. Anything else is just gonna be derelict in, in response to what we need to do. We done had developers, as a developer, I done went through five different developers. And nobody has ever got us to this point. And nobody has ever got us to this point, and now we're here. And we have a counsel and a mayor who are summarily agreeing that this is what we wanna do. Irrespective, anything that we do here today can be amended. That's the legislative work. So if that's something that is amiss, something that is, um, that, um, needs to be tweaked, you can tweak it later. But today, I want the pie, not a piece of the pie, but I want the whole pie. Because that's what's gonna, it's gonna take, listen, we done waited long enough. West of sixty-five has always been delayed or not done at all. We are in the process of getting this done finally. And so I would ask my colleagues respectfully, uh, vote with Hoyt today. Bless your hearts.
Mr. President.
Um, let me just say this, because I've been quiet on this issue.
Yes, sir.
I support you, Counselor Hoyt, and, and your fight for the western side, in particular for Crossplex, and you know that.
Absolutely.
Um, and you know, of course, we always have, there are nine of us, so we not gonna agree on everything. And I, I don't, I don't get upset or anything about that all the time, because we, it's gonna be something every week. I have asked, um, the Chair of Economic Development, Budget and Finance, even if he would be willing, and he said he would, to have a special call meeting to, this week, to discuss this and ask whatever other questions we have, and let the council vote, or let the committee vote to give a recommendation, we can bring it back up and have this debate next week. I'm not certain what would change substantially between this week and next week, I don't know. Uh, but that's, that is a process that we continue to go through. Um, and so I think that, that is something that I, I believe we should do, is, uh, is, is have another conversation about it. I don't think it puts anything in jeopardy between this week and next week, and then we'll have an opportunity for the council to vote on it and do all that, if the council decides to delay it. If not, then we'll, the council will vote on it today. But as it stands, it is, it's not the best deal, and there are other options that, that, uh, and even the recollection from the administration is not all the way accurate, but of course, we have the, 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 the audio from that to, to verify. But, but regardless of all of that, uh, I do think that it's important for this entire body to, to meet and discuss it, because it's a big deal. If it's ninety-five years, if it's fifty years, if it's twenty-five years, this is going to change the western side of, 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 of Birmingham forever. And so we definitely wanna do it right. Now, we talked, I remember us going, and several of us went on this tour, uh, to look at the BRT and where the BRT would go. Now, when we talked to those with the BRT, um, I asked them what was their plan to incorporate the development, whatever was going to take place at the Crossplex, into that stop. They told us, and I wasn't the only council member in there, but they told us they had not had any conversations, uh, about this project. Now, if, if we are serious about doing a transit-related development, or transit-oriented development at the Crossplex, that will not only help that piece of property right there, but also the property around it, across the street, all of that, and this is what we talked about on that tour, then that, those need to be considered. And, and as of today, I don't think that they have been, unless Mr. Dawkins tell me something different. But, but irrespective, I think that needs to be brought to the committee, uh, if we delay it for a week or send it to committee. Uh, that needs to be brought to the committee and tell us, what is the plan? What are you all planning on doing? Is it even being considered? Uh, because that has the, I mean, we saw the line, they showed it to all of us, everyone that was, that was on that bus. We saw where they were, where the stop was going to be, and where they planned on, on having the Bus Rapid Transit line. So those things need to be considered, and I know that, um, you know, I know that Counselor Hoyt is, is very passionate about this, and he has been for a long time. I remember when we were even talking about doing the Crossplex, the building itself, and he wasn't even for it initially, because he didn't like the way that it was set up. I remember that. Am I, am I, my religion for it? So, and he was the one over there, so, so I understand that, and I get, uh, you know, where you are. I would, I would just ask, even though I know you say you want us to vote on it today, that we just let us go and take it into committee and come back out, you know, with the vote next week? I mean, I don't think it changes anything, it won't hurt anything, and I understand wanting to have it done today, I get it, believe it. Because I, I feel the same way about Aldott and whatever else, but I get it, you know? Um, so I, I understand where you are.
Well.
But if, if you, if you would, I think it would be good.
Just, just a point of clarity, Mr. President, because, um, I, I do want us to, to understand that, um, first of all, we won't have a full council next week, because people be out. And so that's gonna be another two weeks, if, uh, if we do that, and, and I plan to be here, because you know, I have to work. And I'll be here too. How I'm thought to pay for spam, and, uh, you know, Ms. Hoyt get the council check, so, you know, and so I have to work. But, um, I just believe that things have been done. I've asked Bear Property, I've asked Colonial, I've asked all these big developers to come. And you wonder why I don't vote for anything that Bear Property has? Because I was told they were gonna come and develop something west of sixty-five, and they have never kept their word. Just telling you. And now we got somebody who wants to develop this land. Listen, ninety-nine years, we still own it. We ain't, we're not selling it. That was my issue, is that we didn't sell it, and that we keep it in our possession. Then we get the chance to control it and then determine what types of, of, uh, uh, of, uh, stores and, and commercial hotel that come there. Because that's your investment. You, you still got to understand, you got a sixty-million dollar, nearly sixty-million dollar investment. And so that's important, important to me. And I'm not gonna agree to anything outside of that, other than a ground lease, because a ground lease guarantees that the city's gonna control it. Okay? We need to do the infrastructure, because it's our property. We did the same thing with Applebee's. Don't y'all know we own Applebee's? Own the building and the land. Did you know that? We own it. Listen, I'm with, I'm telling you that we have gone over these things. It makes sense to me that we do this, because nobody else is coming. The mayor has said to me many times, we can't get nobody to commit. Now we got somebody to commit, and what I like about this new, this developer that we have, he's a former banker. He understands finance better probably than any other developer that you got, unless they have a, 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 um, a background in finance. He got his own interests. He's got to go and secure money for anything that's built out there. So I don't know if, if that ain't skin in the game, I don't know what it is. Maybe I hadn't played touch football. But we know, we hit, when, when touch football don't mean nothing, we hit when you play touch football. Okay, we taking you to the ground in my neighborhood, you know? And so I just think, Mr., Mr. President, that we vote this up or down.
Mr. President.
And if it doesn't, if, 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 if you all decide that's what you're gonna do, that's fine. But I'm telling you, we have done, uh, our due diligence. There are no perfect documents. There are none, and, that I've sent here and looked at. I've chaired, uh, economic development, I've chaired budget and finance, I'm chairing public safety, and now transportation. And so, and, oh, I know what I, my point of clarity was. This is great, this is what I call formidable debate.
Ten minutes, ten minutes later.
I know, right. Ten minutes later, you know, sing your moments. So you mentioned about, um, transportation. Transportation still remains a moving, uh, target. It continue to move. Those grids could change at any date, depending on funding, depending on quite a bit of different things and what have you. That's nothing that we have to hold a project up to, to address, because right now, we don't have the match. We got to get the match for that, to, you know, for that to happen. That might be, you know, two years from now, it might be five years, ten years. So we don't wanna, uh, hold this project hostage, because we waiting on what some transportation to do, and, you know, and of course, y'all know my thoughts about that. You know, the first thing I did when you gave me chairman, I wanna know when their turns were up. Okay, I'm just here to tell you. But I have since, you know, changed my mind, like they might be doing what they need to do. Okay, but I think we move on this. I wanna thank my colleagues for the debate. I think this debate is healthy today. And, um, and I believe that, um, you know, we need to move.
Counselor Tyson, to the motion.
And it's not hea- my name was up for you, and it's not healthy, because y'all have confused the hell out of me. Now, I thought I had my mind made up, and all they got good points. I, I think everybody gonna be here Tuesday. Everybody gonna be here Tuesday. The only one gonna be out is Kim.
I'll be here.
You be, everybody gonna be here. I just, y'all have totally confused me.
I thought y'all were going to DC.
And I haven't, ain't nobody going no DC.
That ain't the way.
And I, and I, I've read this stuff to, to, I, to my false lashes have fell off. And I, I'm, and I thought I understood it, but both of y'all have so, some valid points. And you pulling me both ways, and they all are good points, and...
I love you more.
You, ooh, Lord. And I just don't, I'm, I'm really confused about it. I really, I'm just really confused about the whole thing, but, uh, I just, all right, I miss my case.
All right, Counselor Scales, to the motion, real quick.
Yeah, I'm gonna speak to the motion, Mr. President, because one thing about it, I'm gonna just say this. I'm not gonna let anybody talk to me in any kind of way, and however folk take it, they take it. But I'm gonna stand on my own, and I still say this, Mr. President, as a point of clarity. Since you have been the president, unless somebody can prove to me otherwise, that was the first and only time that we ever voted out of committee. If anybody on this dais can tell me that any differently, and I will not tolerate nobody raising their voice at me. I'm not gonna do that. I don't take that at home. I'm not gonna take it on the job. Never, ever will I do that. But I will say, since you've been the president now, because whether we were a part of the Fab Five or No Five, N-Five, whatever, at the end of the day, that's what was said even last week. That's why I got back in line today, not because of trying to be in a group or a team. It was about, this is the way this administration wants to keep it. So that's all that I'm saying, to stick to the issue is either we gonna respect the committee process, or if you voted out of committee today, then we just need to suspend any movement forward, including Ms. Abbott said on the way out the door last week, she didn't wanna hear anything else talking about the committee process if it wasn't gonna be respected. Well, this is the week to, to exercise that. We either gonna do it or we're not. That's all I'm saying. And as far as the Crossplex, I don't want it to get it mixed up, none of this stuff. It's not about whether or not you are for the folk who live in western Alabama. I come from western, lived on Thirty-first Street Inslan when the racetrack was out there, that's not my issue. But if you're gonna tell me and you're going to reprimand me for, for last week's decision to support another colleague who didn't have representation on the library board, well, why is it that this week we're doing the total opposite? That's why I had a subsequent motion, Mr. President, that if the chair was willing to go ahead and meet, and we get all of whatever this whole project is laid out once and for all, that then it comes out of committee. But at least the committee process would have been regarded respectfully. That, that's what I was actually over here asking the chair. And so at, at, at the end of the day, I, I, you know, there are just some things, I'm just gonna be honest with every single man on this council, that Counselor Scales ain't gonna take. I'm just telling you that. I'm gonna keep my cool on this dais, but I'm not, I just refuse to, because I'm not gonna disrespect anybody else on this dais. We can differ in opinion, but I'm not going to let anybody say anything that I think is demeaning to me as a woman. I'm not gonna do it. That's not a part of the job, that wasn't what I was elected to do, and Michael Scales take care of his wife. Really, and I'm telling you that, Mr. President, that, that's all that I wanted to say. I'm not debating the issue. I understand the counselor being passionate. I was passionate about this crazy East Pennsyl Valley Rec Center that got mold in it, but I didn't get mad at folks who, who own this same council, asking for the same respect today, and they voted for it. Against what the Patriot counselor wanted. And now we dealing with a bunch of junk that had over a million and some dollars invested into a facility that even the college don't even use themselves. So nevertheless, Mr. President, I'm just saying, respect you. For the record, since you've been the president, we have not gone outside of the sphere of the committee. That was in my first term. So either we're gonna respect the committee process or not, and if we're not, that's fine. But I'm gonna make a, a mental note today, that that's what we need to do moving forward. Don't have no committee. Just gonna do what you're gonna do, but if we have, if we can accept a subsequent motion for this to be a special call meeting specifically about this project, if that is acceptable to the council, then I would offer it at the, at the proper time.
You just.
Mr., Mr. President.
Go ahead, counselor, real quick.
Yes, um, Counselor Scales, let me apologize, but I was, I was, um, you know, I'm in, in a moment. As you have been in a moment. You know, and, you know, you, you, you say to us all the time, you know, you're big girl, you know, you here. And so I respect that. But not directed necessarily to you, but I was in the middle of trying to defend my district, trying to defend this project. And I've been up here long enough to know, you've had the same kind of passion, the same momentum and velocity that I showed today, and I rarely do that. Y'all know I'm shy. So I just really, you know, I don't get into a whole lot, but, but, but if you think I offended you, I apologize to you. I love you, and you know that we talk every day, not some days, but every day. Because I don't want that man to come up here, jumping on me. Okay, so, go, go, Ms. Hoyt, and get somebody by me. But, but listen, you know I got the respect for you, but I was at a point of making it, what's, and you thought I was finished, I wasn't. And I was trying to make my point. I'm not as young as you are. But I am just as passionate as you are. And we all have a lot of passion up here, you know, and sometime our voices escalate and, and, and what have you, but generally, when I'm, when I'm upset, I just tell you how I operate. When I'm upset, I get quiet. I wasn't upset today. I was just in my element, trying to make the point so that I could send this thing home, you know, with my council coll- council colleague, that's all. But please, don't ever think I'm raising a daughter, I pastor women. I'm in love with one woman.
Amen.
Who gets my check. And all. Mm, that's right, you know, and so I don't want folks to think I disrespected you, because I did not do that. And I would never do that, and if you think I have, then I apologize to you sincerely. Now, that's where I am with that, you know, but that, now, I don't wear my, you know, my emotion on my shoulders, I don't do that. And I've been on, you know, I've been, uh, in the choir, and they done put me out the choir. And now I'm in. I'm gonna do my part and sing my part. But I, you know, but every now and then, even choir members get a solo.
Your apologies accepted, counselor.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, so we have a motion on the floor. Counselor Scales offered a friendly amendment to the motion, if you will, uh, or substitute to that, um, and basically to have... Um, and basically to have this discussed at a meeting, a special call meeting this week.
Mr. President, that, that'd be opposite outside of this.
I understand, but I'm just.
Okay.
Saying, stating it for the record, um, that we have a, in a, in a, a motion, excuse me, that we have a meeting this week, a special call meeting, and then we'll have it back on the agenda for next week. The motion that is before us is for us to refer it back to the committee and then let the committee handle it. Council, Mr. Chair, you, you made the, the, uh.
Yeah, I'd be willing to withdraw my motion if we take up the subsequent motion.
Motion is the main motion. The main motion, he said he's withdrawing, he, you.
His, he, the, the motion he's referring to, the, referring to committee, so if he do that, then the main motion is the past item.
Right, and then Skales wants to offer us, uh, a substitute motion.
Okay, what is the substitute motion?
That we have a special call meeting, uh, and call the chair, which, with whatever date that he sets. And we can get this done within the week, but they understand to be back on the agenda.
For March first, right. So, is that your mo- Council Lundey, are you withdrawing?
Point of clarity, Mr. President.
Mr. President, point of clarity. Go ahead.
I think that's an administrative capacity to, to call a special meeting. Uh, we're dealing with a motion now related to the actual topic in the development of Crossplex. So, uh, I think we're a little out of order.
President, point of clarity, how is that an administrative function?
Hold on, just let him finish what he's saying.
We're setting a special called meeting. That's an administrative function of the city administrator yourself.
What?
To set the actual special.
No, no, what we're talking about, yeah, I know, you, you came in on the middle of this conversation. What we're talking about is Council Lundey made a motion that we refer it to budget and, economic development budget and finance.
And that's, that's a legitimate motion.
And then Counselor Skales was saying that, that her motion was, if, if she makes the motion, was that we have a special called economic development budget and finance meeting. That's what we're talking about, between this week and next week, which we, you know, we have special call meetings all the time. It's a special called committee meeting. That's what she's talking about, not, not a special call council meeting or any of that.
Mr. Chairman, if, and if I could add something to it, just in dealing with this item, that meeting would be kind of outside of just dealing with this item. So, we would just take that on itself and make that motion. Doesn't have to be a resolution or anything.
Right.
But this motion is dealing with disposing of this item.
I understand, right. I'm just making sure we all clear on the same page. Alright.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Patton.
I think I need somebody from the legal department to explain if this is delayed for another week. It has to be announced again and takes another ten days. I think, is that right? So, it would be another two weeks before it appears on the agenda again.
Alright, um, so, we can take it up. There's a commi- there's also a committee hold meeting on Wednesday, so we can discuss.
Let me ask you this, Mr. President. So, we in the confinement of the.
It's because of the incentives.
Of the, um, the publication. What if, what if, what if, what if we recess the council to tomorrow, right before committed to hold? Is, would that, would that help, Mr. Chairman?
We can, we, we can lay it on the table, go through the rest of the agenda, recess, and then meet again tomorrow.
Okay.
You know, it's on y'all.
Mr. Clerk, how does that?
Those motions don't, really, uh, recess is something temporary, like going to the bathroom, restroom. We would adjourn the meeting to a time.
Certain.
Certain.
Right.
Uh, lay it on the table, same meeting. So, now, if you're gonna lay it on the table and adjourn to a time certain, then of course, it's still on the, during the same meetings. It has something to do with the same meeting, because you adjourned the meeting to a time certain.
But, well, let me just say this, Counsel, we have a committee of the whole meeting. If we just even delayed the item a week, we still can discuss it, vote on it, and then they would deal with whatever they need to deal with legally as far as the notification, but it still wouldn't necessarily put the project at risk. They would just do what they need to do. I think the legal department, go ahead.
I think he's talking about the incentives. If you're given an incentive, you have to, but I don't think you can vote on it without it being notice, the notice going out first. I don't think you can do that.
Well, even if, even if it was, the ki- if that's the case, it would be here back in another two weeks. But it would still give us time to discuss it and vote on it, uh, in the committee and then have the recommendation and we would, we'll be here to discuss it. So, I, I mean, if the council is, is, is in agreement with, um, taking it up at committee of the hold on Wednesday, then we can get it back on the agenda, Mr. Patton, as soon as possible.
Why does that matter to you? You don't even show up to.
Mr. Patton, go ahead. Hold on, y'all hold up. Mr. Patton.
So, let me kind of get this clear. Is there something that you want us to provide you with? Is there something you're not clear about? What is it that we need to do to assist you with clearing this matter up? Because I don't understand what it is.
There, there are, there are a lot of, um, questions that need to be answered that have been raised today by several council members and just give the council and the committee time to answer, get, get the answers to the questions. And then whatever the committee makes a recommendation on, whether it's for it or against it, yes or no, whatever, let the committee vote on it and then we bring it back up on the council and we just deal with it on the dais.
Mr. President, with all due respect, for the last three months, we've answered every document, every time, to the letter that they've asked for.
I understand.
So, now, what do we do? I don't, I don't understand what we're doing.
I understand. There's a, there's a motion on the floor right now, um, to delay, to refer it back to the committee. Do you want to keep the motion on the floor?
Yes.
Alright, and we have a second. So, we're voting on referring it to the committee of the hold, or to economic development budget and finance?
Yes.
Okay. Alright, that's the motion on the floor. Ready to vote, Mr. Clerk. Alright, that motion fails. Yeah, that fails. The main motion is before us to approve this item. Ready to vote, Mr. Clerk.
Mr. President, I had a subsequent motion.
What is your motion?
My motion, Mr. President, is that the committee, meaning economic development, budget and finance, are willing to take this up in a special call meeting on this Friday, Mr. President. And, and with that understanding, Mr. President, that would allow for the item to come back up either next Tuesday or the subsequent Tuesday, which would be the eighth, but to allow the law department to be able to publish it. That's my motion, subsequent motion, Mr. President.
Is your motion to delay it for one week?
My, my motion, Mr. President, is to delay it for one week, whether it be one week or two week, to allow the law department to be able to publish the item.
Call for the question, Mr. President.
I am speaking, Counselor.
Alright, that, uh, they're asking basically to cut off debate and, um, call for the question. Do you have a motion?
That's my subsequent motion, Mr. President. My motion, Mr. President, is that we delay the item only for one week, which would allow the economic development budget and finance committee to meet on this Friday, Mr. President. The chair's already made that, uh, uh, opportunity available.
Your motion is to, uh, delay for one week.
One week, Mr. President, to allow the committee to dispense of the item.
Got it. The motion is before us for one week delay. There's a second on the floor. We're ready to vote on a one week delay. It was time.
Voting is up.
Or discuss it and move on. Alright, that item fails. The main motion is before us to vote on the item, yes or no. Do you have some unreadiness?
I do. What can I, can I?
What's your unreadiness?
I can't stop.
What do you mean? Well, if you, if you vote, if you vote no, it fails and we'll still be able to discuss it again. They'll bring back another proposal. If you vote yes, then the item passes the way that it is.
And can I ask a question?
Yes.
Can we, uh, can we have another, I thought we were gonna have another meeting this week?
We have a committee of the hold meeting on Wednesday, already scheduled, where we'll discuss. If this item does not, if the item does not pass today, we will discuss it in committee of the hold or whenever the administration brings it back to us with whatever other options that we've talked about. The administration could also bring it back in the exact same form as it is right now at a later date, uh, if there's no, if there are no substantial changes to the original agreement that we are voting for today.
And if we, and if we pass today, we can't make no changes. Can we amend some things?
You can amend anything, but, yeah. But right now, if we pass it today, it'll basically be a ninety-five year agreement. Alright, that item passes, one abstention from Council Tyson. Next item.
Should be item nineteen.
Item nineteen.
Mr. President, Mr. President.
Yes.
Before we take up that item, may I ask a question, please? So, I just want to have a clear understanding. Are we now voting out of committee?
That's what we did today.
I'm just asking.
You did it last week.
Go ahead, go ahead, Mr. Clerk.
Item nineteen, a resolution authorizing.
Hold on.
You saw it.
Go ahead, Mr. Clerk.
A resolution authorizing certain action with respect to the refunding of certain, certain of general obligation refunding bonds, series two thousand six dash eight by general obligation refunding bonds, series two thousand sixteen A of the city of Birmingham, Alabama.
Mr. President, I move approval.
Second. Abbott, Roberson, do you have any speakers to this item? Council Hoyt, did you want to speak to this?
Yeah, what, what is?
This is the bond.
Yeah, well, I'm sorry, so, who, who is the team? Can you give me that?
Here's Ms. Barnett.
Yes, sir. This, um, interest rates have declined and, uh, right now, we have the opportunity to save seven million dollars over the term of the outstanding bonds, present value of five million. The proposed team is Wells Fargo Loop Capital Securities Capital as underwriters, that's fifty-five percent minority participation. Uh, bond counsel, Manon Cooper and Gale, uh, underwriters counsel, Serodi and Permet, and issuers counsel, Walker LLC.
So, Mr. Walker. He seemed to resurface.
And we're preparing to go to market right away so that, uh, market doesn't change and the savings go away.
I, I, I really got a little unreadiness with, uh, with one of the folk y'all chose, and I won't call him out, but y'all know who he is.
You good? Council Hoyt?
Are y'all gonna try to get somebody in? Is that something that you would consider, uh, Mr. Patton?
I'm sorry, I was caught up in something else mentioned.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
Yes, sir. I'm, would you repeat it?
I, I have problem with the, uh, with some of the team members. And so, I'm just trying to see how we can, um. Yeah, it's the same person that we, we got issues with on other, um, other, other, uh, deals with the, um, with the city. And so, I'm just trying to see if there's somebody else y'all could put in there besides that person. I won't call him out, but I think y'all know who I'm concerned with.
I don't know. I, I'm not sure who you're referring to, but we don't have anybody in mind at this, anyone else in mind at this time.
Okay.
You're, what he's referring to is, uh, Walker Law and the, um, the contract that's been submitted to us that the council has not approved was the, um, legal contract, uh, that was sent to us. I think it was forty thousand dollars. Um, that was submitted to the council, fifty? Okay, fifty thousand dollars. It was submitted to the council and there are some concerns about that. And, um, so, that's, that's the issue.
Right, and, and, and I've been given, um, the understanding that they could withdraw that, that person that I have concerns with.
They're gonna withdraw?
Have such to with somebody else. I know you didn't.
Who said that?
Mr. President, uh, I indicated that. I sent a text message. Um, because of the time sensitivity that we have on this bond, uh, issue, um, I'm not gonna haggle over who, um, the individual that you questioned, um, uh, we'll make some other provisions.
Okay.
Uh, this, this is more important than any one individual.
Okay.
So, do we need to, um, is that, so, Mr. Clerk, you understand what we're doing?
That's not included in the resolution, the team, is it?
Yeah, we're in, we will be approving the team and everything today. So, how will we deal with that?
Can I have a moment to?
Go ahead, Mr. Mayor. Counselor Skales.
Yes, Mr. President. So, my question would be, being that we are approving this item today, uh, can we not approve it with the amendment that has just been raised? Because I have the same question.
Well, let me, the mayor, I think, has got it spined now.
There, there's only one other minority firm that's, uh, qualified, and that's Yvonne Green Davis. And we wish to offer, uh, allow a substitute to be made of Ms. Yvonne, attorney of Yvonne Green Davis.
I'm fine with that.
From Walker Law.
Do we need a motion today?
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that we amend the actual resolution to, um, take out Walker Law LLC and, and omit, uh, Yvonne Green Davis.
Second.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed.
Alright, the main motion is before us with that amended one.
Mr. President, I do have a question.
Go ahead.
Again, I just want to be certain that based on what the action that we just took, will the council receive a copy of the amended contract to reflect the change that we just voted on just a moment ago?
Yes.
Okay.
I mean, I'm.
Don't take anything for granted. Is that gonna happen, Mr. Mayor? That we have a copy?
The contract would have to reflect what the council voted on.
Okay, alright.
Okay, we're ready to vote, Mr. Clerk.
Voting should be up.
Okay, that vote should be up. That item passes, one abstention from Council Lundey. Next item, Mr. Clerk.
Should be item twenty.
Item twenty. Now, does this have the same issue as the, as the previous one?
A resolution.
Yeah. Go ahead, Mr. Clerk, hold on.
A resolution authorizing certain action with respect to the refunding of certain of the general obligation refunding bonds, series two thousand seven A by general obligation refunding bonds, series two thousand sixteen B of the city of Birmingham, Alabama.
President, I move approval.
Second, second. Abbott, Roberson, Mr. Barnett, you, I was just asking, did the same issue apply here?
Yes, there are two different series of bonds, that's why they're two different.
Substitute, so are we gonna substitute, Ms., you want to make that motion again?
I'll help you out, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Uh, I'd like to, uh, make a motion, Mr. President, to amend the, uh, resolution to read, uh, to omit Walker Law Firm and add Yvonne, uh, Davis Gray.
Second.
Green Davis.
Green Davis, I'm sorry. Second.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed.
Alright, we're ready to vote on the item as amended. And keep in mind, Counsel, the, the bond projects have been, um, sent to the council. We met with the mayor and, and his staff a few weeks ago, so we need to really, uh, nail down a time to go ahead and do a work session, because we're, we're approving the, the bonds today, but we have not approved the expenditures. And that's what the mayor has presented to us, so we don't need to delay on that. Am I wrong?
No, this is totally a refinancing of some outstanding issues.
Okay.
This is not the new money bonds that we've already approved.
Yeah. Okay, go ahead.
President, I'm wrong. Your vote, President.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. That item passes, one abstention from Council Lundey. Next item should be.
Thirty-four?
Thirty-four, yes. Item thirty-four, a resolution approving the.
Item thirty-four, a resolution approving the following advanced expense accounts. Courtney Hunter, committee assistant, city council, Montgomery, Alabama, seven hundred and two dollars and eight cents, February the twenty-third through the twenty-fifth, two thousand sixteen, to attend two thousand sixteen legislative session. Chad Mitchell, deputy administrator, city council, Washington District, Columbia, three thousand one hundred and ninety dollars and six cents, March fourth through the ninth, two thousand sixteen, to attend National League of Cities.
Item?
I'm sorry, I missed two.
You got another page, Ms. Clerk.
One second, I missed two. Kimberly Rafferty, councillor, city council, Washington District, Columbia, one thousand four hundred, I'm sorry, four thousand sixty-two dollars and ninety-eight cents, March the fourth through the eleventh, two thousand sixteen, to attend National League of Cities. Capitol Hill visit, Sheila Tyson, councillor, city council, Washington District, Columbia, is two thousand four hundred and seventy-six dollars and seven cents, March the sixteenth through the twentieth, two thousand sixteen, to attend Fifth Annual Black Women Roundtable, Women of Power, Healthy, Wealthy, and Wise National Summit.
Mr. President, I'd like to move the item.
Second. Roberson Parker.
Okay. Councilmember Lundey. That vote should be up.
That item passes, next item.
Should be item thirty-seven. A resolution setting a public hearing, March the twenty-second, two thousand sixteen, to consider adoption of a proposal to amend the amended Pratt Urban Renewal and Redevelopment Plan to include an expansion of the plan's redevelopment boundary, area, and objectives to help implement the plan for Pratt.
Mr. President, I move approval.
Second. Abbott, Roberson, ready to vote, Ms. Clerk.
Okay. That vote should be up.
That item passes, next item.
Should be addendum item thirty-nine. A resolution authorizing the council president to sign the contract of Master Solution LLC and the lobby's registration document and directing the mayor to advance said contract and document to all the appropriate staff, ensure that the administrative measures are completed and manner to procure the services contract.
Move item.
Second.
Uh, Lundey, Scales, Counselor Abbott.
Yeah, my question on this one is, um, are we, are we complying with the Mayor Council Act by doing this? And does this infringe on the administration's duties as opposed to our duties as legislators? I guess that's a question for the law department. Do I need to say it again? Okay, so item thirty-nine, the item we're on. Okay, my question is, does this, if we vote in favor of this, are we in conflict with the requirements of the Mayor Council Act? Are we infringing on the administration's duties? Well, are we, are we infringing on the administration's duties, period?
General law authorizes, uh, well, empowers, let me put it that way. General, general law empowers the, uh, council to direct, uh, documents be signed by who they choose.
Okay, so there's no conflict?
The... Well, ye- yes, there's a conflict, but the conflict is resolved by general law.
Okay. General law trumps the Mayor Council Act, I guess.
There is no conflict.
Okay.
Mr. President? Counselor, hold on, Counsel Tyson, Counsel Abbott, you had, did you get it?
Yeah, that was my question.
My name was on the council.
But that's what I wanted, him to see all them extra words.
Well, you know, he a professor.
But, but I, I... Have, have you, we have talked to, you have talked to, about signing this contract?
Yes.
And he refused to sign.
Yes, let me turn my mic on. I have spoken with the mayor on several occasions, I've sent him letters, memos, you all have a copy of all of those. And I've also asked the law department in, in previous council meetings, as well as the mayor in previous council meetings, what were his intentions on this particular contract, and he has refused to sign them. This contract was approved by the council back in, in two thousand and fifteen in August, uh, and, and the mayor refuses to sign the contract.
But it won't take his power away from signing another contract?
The council has to even authorize the mayor to sign any contract or enter into any agreement that the city will enter into, we have to give him that authority. Uh, and, and, um, so, the council is the body that, and you look at in the previous contracts that we've just, uh, approved today, it authorizes the mayor to enter into a contract and, and execute any other documents and all of that. The council has to give that authority, even to the mayor. Yeah, Mr. President.
My name is on, Mr. President.
Counselor Scales.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, I say this respectfully to all of my colleagues, um... And I'm, I'm trying to make sure I parse my words correctly because I'm not wanting my colleagues to even respond. I'm just trying to speak my opinion peacefully and to educate the public at the same time. Last time I checked, when I put my name on a ballot, I was a council member. And I think that I'm just trying to figure out, even this morning with the previous ordinance that was passed, why is it that the council is so overly concerned with making sure that we're not impeding the mayor's authority, yet the administration impedes our authority all the time? The truth of the matter is, the council not only passed this item, but the public needs to know, it came out of our budget. It didn't even come out of the general fund budget, am I right, Mr. President? It came out of the council's consulting fund, which is a part of the overall budget that was being approved, okay? So when we talk about in the spirit of cooperation, every council member on this day is know that this company has performed a service. In fact, we would be paying this con- company retroactively because they've already performed the service. Yet when we are falsely accused of saying that if we don't pay Strata, if we don't pay this one and that, they put, the mayor's gotten up here and said several times that these folk have performed certain services. That's the reason why we need to go ahead and pay them. Out of a spirit of cooperation, the council did it. Now, when the council has a contract for a company that has been providing us a service and all of us sit up there and applaud this person for the service that they rendered to us, but yet by the same token, we don't think we supposed to pay these people. And we got a contract. The public needs to know, we actually been approving money up here for folk who don't even have a contract with the city. And in a spirit of cooperation with the mayor, and I would say that if he was here, cause I know he's listening, we passed money even with that having said. So I don't understand when the council do legally what we're required to do and we're sitting here saying, well, you know, have we impeded on the mayor's? I, I don't get that. If he didn't sign it, we can't force him to sign. All we can do is take him to court or take the action that we're taking right now. But that doesn't preclude the fact that the service has been rendered. The state legislature is doing things right now that if we don't have a person to speak on behalf of the city, as in whether it be the council or the city at large, what are you gonna do about it? You don't even have a voice in Montgomery. I don't even understand, we talking about the minimum wage and the impact of that? How do you, how do you defend yourself, you going to a war with a butter knife? How you fight a battle with a butter knife? You can't do that. So right now, the legislature is in session, Mr. President, and, and I know, but you just allow me, please, oblige me. Cause I don't understand why we're overly concerned about, the, the mayor's office, Mr. Patton right here is more than capable. I mean, he plays the choir director every week. He tell folk when to speak, when not to talk, he's doing his thing over here for the mayor. When is the council gonna start doing what we need to do for the council? This man has worked on behalf of this legislative body to get legislation for the city. And we can't even pay the man? So basically, we passed the money last week, but with no contract in place. That's wrong. I don't care how you look at it, that's wrong. And so if we're taking some, we're taking a proactive approach as the legislative body to pay someone that has been fighting for us legislatively to get a contract signed, that's just real baffling. And I know some people up here may disagree with me, but I'm gonna tell you, as a business owner, I think it's so unfortunate when we do these kinda little things we're doing, because if it wasn't in, in, you know, in, in line with the law, you know, there's a reason why some folk kinda from the law department may have apprehension about speaking. Cause this is the law. If the mayor doesn't sign it, actually when we pass an item ten days, it become law automatically, whether he signs it or not. So we, what we're doing today is to just make sure that we are operating accordingly. And that's just so unfortunate, Mr. President. I hope we don't put another business in this kinda situation.
Thank you, um...
Hoyt?
That's why you didn't recognize, man.
Counselor Hoyt?
Yeah, I apologize. Yeah, well, and, and I want the public to understand that, um, this particular resolution only speaks to this particular, um, lobby, um, contract. And so this is not a coblang kind of, uh, situation. So, um, but I do believe that, um, as others have, have, um, offered there and surrendered, I mean, rendered their services and we oftentimes, uh, come back and approve, yeah.
We just did it last week.
Yeah, absolutely. We just did it with the, uh, the folks summit media and what have you. Uh, this is no different than, than what we did last week, so I do want to say that. So there's some, uh, uh, some clear understanding of what we've been asked to do today.
Okay, thank you, and, and I'll say this, you know, I don't know if you call it a chameleon or, or whatever you call it, but when you have someone that sits there and says that they don't, the mayor says that he doesn't get involved in the legislative process on, uh, the minimum wage, which, by the way, he's invited to every committee of the whole meeting, which he does not come to. But on top of that, uh, he's saying he doesn't get involved in legislative process, but he's calling council members, telling them not to vote for this item. Now, I don't understand, you either involved in the legislative process or you are not. And so if the mayor would just go ahead and sign this contract, then we wouldn't even be at this point. But it was in fact, uh, the mayor that said the council can approve a monkey to sign a contract. Did he not say that? So I'm just saying, we don't, it, it, look, if he's going to abdicate his responsibility and not do what he's elected to do and as the mayor and sign these contracts that the council approves, this is what we have to do. Are we ready to vote, Ms. Clerk? That item passes, one no vote, um, and one abstention from Counsel Parker. Next item. Uh, let's move to suspend the rules for our speakers.
So move.
Second.
Aye.
First speaker.
Michael Sullivan. Pastor McGuire. Willie Jenkins.
Please state your name for the record, you have three minutes.
Willie Jenkins, Willie Jenkins. Uh, to the mayor and all the city councilors. I would like to announce, uh, that, um, uh, Mr. Parker, that, uh, best at bowling, we got, um, Mary Hard, Hardville and, uh, best at bowling for Oak Street, Mr. Bowden, mother passed. And we're gonna have the service at Oak Street Baptist Church Thursday at, uh, twelve o'clock in Hardbeats, Hardville from Cottageville. And I'd like to, uh, announce that, uh, Reverend Connor having his anniversary on his second Sunday in March. And then he having a banquet Friday, I mean, Saturday, this coming Saturday at four o'clock at Oak Street Baptist Church. Also, the Carver High School alumni are going, the best day to go and bowling on the Sunday, Saturday, April the twenty-third at one P M. All the mighty Carver High School, District Four, everybody would like to go bowling. We going at one o'clock, going best day to bow, bowling, going bowling at, uh, best day, April the twenty-third, one until three P M. And anybody would like to go to talk to our president, Barbara Gallin, tickets, twenty dollars. Also, the Sisters of Voices, Men of Prayer, we're gonna be with the Sisters of Voices. That'll be the second Sunday in March at three P M. And, uh, it's gonna be at the, um, it, it's gonna be in Terrance City. At, uh, fourteen hundred Alabama Street, Terrance, Terrance City. That'll be the second Sunday after we leave Reverend Connor, anniversary coming up the second Sunday in March. And, um, also my prayers go out to Barbara Gallin, she the president alumni, her mother in the hospital. Um, Mr. Parker, so we wanna pray for, uh, Barbara Gallin. And we would like to get you, uh, she wants you to get us on the, gentlemen, we got a gift to give to you for your, um, pre, we just have a, a token of some, a tribute or trophy or something to give you for, uh, and we wanna give it to you, you know. And I, and, uh, I'd like to say, uh, that, um, that's all I'd like to say today, and, um, Carver High School alumni, we looking for the reunion this year. So we want everybody to come out to the reunion, coming back this year, this year, you know, at this year, coming this year. And that's all I'd like to say, so in the Men of Prayer, that's right, Men of Prayer will be, we did a wonderful job at Galley Baptist Church. And also we was at, we gonna be at Hillen Spring this coming Sunday, at, uh, Hillen Spring Baptist Church. Also, the Black History Program will be Sunday, I mean, uh, this coming, uh, Saturday at Sixth Avenue. But I will be there with my pastor, uh, banquet this coming Saturday, Oak Street Baptist Church at four o'clock. Let invite all the city council, so y'all to come to my pastor, uh, appreciation, I mean, there's a banquet we gonna have for him Saturday. And, um, uh, and must, you know?
Mr. Jenkins?
That's all.
Thank you, sir. Good job. Uh, next speaker, Ms. Clerk.
Robert Walker. Okay, Cedric Hatch.
Ms. Hatch, you have, uh, three minutes, please state your name, address for the rap, please.
Good morning, my name is Cedric Hatch. And once again, I resign at twenty-three hundred Fifth Avenue North. Just wanna be briefly this morning, wanna talk about a little subject, you know, I keep an old subject with me. A city under siege by a spirit of genocide. A city under siege by a spirit of genocide. I think we all here know what the word genocide mean. A killing of a certain ethnic group, you know what I mean? In this, uh, uh, group here, I'm talking about black young people in the city of Birmingham. Whenever we have twelve shootings in one week, y'all, that's a lot of violence going on. You know what I mean? I, I know there's nothing to be spotlighted today, nobody wanna jump in the camera and talk about this here. But if we were talking about growth with businesses going on in neighborhoods and all that kinda stuff, we're talking in front of cameras then. But don't too many people wanna stand in front of the camera and go talk about bodies on the ground and violence getting out of hand. You know what I mean? Don't nobody really wanna go there, dude, don't nobody wanna go there. Bro said, going there this morning, you know, I was just having a talk with the Lord this morning, I said, God, what's going on? Why we ain't effective in the city of Birmingham with this violence? Man, I know we got over half a dozen organizations set, now they say, you know what I mean, that, that we got something to do with stopping the violence. But we ain't effective, we got a church on every corner, y'all, got all these pastors. Y'all know these same people coming out and standing in front of the mic and so-called praying with a piece of paper in front of them, reading their prayer from a piece of paper and all that kinda stuff. Why we ain't effective in the city of Birmingham, y'all? I wonder why? Could it be second Timothy three and five, that we got a form of godliness, but no power? Could that be what it is? We got a formal, what that mean, bro said? We showbow, we photo op it and all this kinda stuff, but we really ain't concerned. It's just not, most of the time, some tied into a dollar bill, but I really ain't concerned. And then most of the people that sat there involved and stopped the violence, ain't throwing rice all the way. Got a little education behind a little thing, I'm, I'm a side mill group too, I'm a side mill group. If God ain't anointed you, your group in vain. Then when the Lord do send somebody by, that got a little anointing to this thing, you don't wanna be bothered with them? No, they don't act like me, I, I can't fool with them. And I ain't just talking about myself either, it's some other people out there dedicated, walking these streets every day, all day. Shouting, we need some help, but can't get no help from nobody up here. But these all little thing come along, come on, man, I'll help you. You know, I heard Dr. King in the spirit reel last night, I was praying and I was telling Dr. King, he said, "Bro said, would you tell my people that next month during the third through the fifth, they be down there saying in front of that bridge, margin across the bridge, we shall overcome, bloody Sunday." But can I tell somebody? We got a bloody Monday in Tiddlyfield, we got a bloody Tuesday in Eastlake, we got a bloody Wednesday in Smithfield, we got a bloody Thursday in Eastlake, we got a bloody Friday in Silver Point, we got a bloody Saturday in Best... Friday in Sillaport, we got a bloody Saturday in Bussmore, we got a bloody Sunday in South Town Project, right here in Birmingham, y'all, but ain't nothing being done. Ain't nothing being done, it's sad, y'all. When we gonna forget about a building for a minute, and all this kinda stuff, and worry about a body that's sitting in the ground? These people losing their family, losing family, man, mama still crying, son dying. And ain't nobody doing nothing about it, the choir's going out. Everybody said they doing something, gotta take a team of cameras with them, I gotta be seen. You know the Bible said, Matthew five, I'm getting on that now, Matthew five fourteen, said, "Let your light shine before men, that they may see your good works and glorify your father, which is in heaven." Not us, y'all, we gotta decrease, that he must increase. We gotta do away with all this fake stuff, because that's what we got in Birmingham, a lot of fake propaganda going on, and God ain't getting involved. You know why? 'Cause he's in a blessed no mess, I'm gone.
Next speaker, Mr. Clerk.
Uh, Frank Matthews.
Mr. Matthews will state your name and address for the record, you have three minutes to address the council.
I made a mistake coming late last week when I said I'm protesting short meetings. Be careful what you speak. Frank Matthews, two-two-seven-two Ledgewood Lane. I'm so glad a lot happened today, because I brought something, I brought a pampers, because I knew it was gonna be a whole lot of mess, with a few people as it relates to ten-ten, and then this pampers have a slice of bread, have a pacifier, and a bottle. All the things that Mr. David Faulkner wanted to take from the poor people, he wanted to not allow raises for poor people, so the baby can continue to suck on pacifiers rather than having the bottles, and wanted to take slices of bread out of our mouths. And ain't nothing like a baby that got to wear the same pampers over and over, because the mother can't afford to change. So I wanna thank this council for going out on the ledge and putting it out there where the ghost can get, uh, the grass, and saying that you gonna stand up no matter who the opposition is. And something else happened in this council that I'm glad that the mayor spoke to and somewhat changed. If you are looked with me, there's a resolution from the land bank, where there's a number of lawyers, I think probably about twenty or thirty of them, that are charged with responsibilities in the resolution with the land bank authority to quick deed to properties. But I'm amazed that at the first name is Chris and Small. In case the public and no one else knows, Chris and Small, Christian Small, is the law firm that Mr. David Faulkner works for. So I just seen y'all change Walker to Green. Can we change this number one, Mr. Christian law firm with Mr. David Faulkner, representative that's fighting against us keeping bottles out of the mouth of our kids? Our kids sucking pacifiers and a slice of bread and a stinking diaper for being in the homes of our poor people? And let me tell you something, Mr. Hoyt said it well this morning, he said he need the, uh, poor people's campaign to be initiated. Dr. King died for economic reasons. There's four million seven hundred and seventy-nine, four hundred and seventy-five inhabitants of the state of Alabama, that make up that, that fifty thousand plus, uh, square miles, sixty-seven counties, four hundred and sixty incorporated municipalities, one hundred and sixty-nine cities, and two hundred and ninety-one township. Guess what? They gonna mess with y'all down in Montgomery, what y'all did today, talking about publishing and all that, they against you, and they gonna fight it. But guess what? The super majority of the Republicans got down there, it ain't nothing compared to the hundreds of thousands of people that's getting ready to strike. We're calling for a strike, March one. All you that, that, that don't think those little people count, you won't get your, uh, coffee in the morning from McDonald's, this state is finna strike. And we calling the all sixty-seven counties, we gonna visit these sixty-seven county, the momentum is there, the momentum is there. And all of you that's not on this bandwagon, Miss Abbott, I'm somewhat appalled at you, Kim Rafferty, definitely. I remember when she was broken, disgusting, and couldn't be trusted, live across the street from me, I had to put out of my own pocket to provide and help her get along. And then I dad her, talking about the business, Miss Abbott, talking about the business, the business is the people of the city. How many more times y'all gonna keep forgetting it? The business of this council is the business of the city, and I know that's incorporate other businesses, but the business don't vote for you. The people do, and they talking about how it's gonna hurt them. It's gonna hurt this baby sucking on a pacifier. How many had babies that sucked on pacifier because there was nothing in the bottle? How many of you, couldn't give your baby wheat bread, you had to give them the cheap, the cheap, generic bread, couldn't even give them wheat bread, couldn't afford a diaper, and you against ten-ten? Please, please, get rid of Mr. Faulkner's law firm, Mr. Mayor Jarvis, tell Mr. Mayor, he just, I think, advocated getting rid of Walker for Green, well, they need to get rid of Smith Small with Mr. David Faulkner, as one of the representing attorneys, and they keep saying that he's making four, um, three hundred dollars an hour. Well, guess what? We do not want to feed him, we do not wanna feed that law firm. So I'm saying, council, if y'all have anything to do, and matter of fact, I heard that a lot of them lawyers on the land bank authority ain't doing nothing anyway. So maybe he needs to, his firm needs to be one that's long and gone, all right? So y'all, please bring him, Mr. Mayor, you hear me? I'm ringing that bell to say, feed these children. And we need the mayor, Mr. Jarvis, we need him to go down there legislative and stand up before that sentence. Can you get the, uh, the security truck to take him on down there, they debating it now? And stand tall and ring that bell, he's a tall man, he can go to the poke, he can go to the choke, he can go to all that, it's time to go down to Montgomery, stand tall and proud, and I'm glad to call it Darius out. They said I met with you in the back room, but we don't want you in the back room, we want you in the front room, all right? Thank you, guys, love you very much.
All right. Mr. Hilliard. State your name and address for the record, you have three minutes.
I'll be very brief, uh, Darius Hilliard, six-twenty-nine Treehaven Drive, Birmingham, Alabama, three-five-two-one-four. Uh, I just wanted to, uh, thank the council, uh, for your leadership, uh, progression in the city forward, uh, and I just wanna reiterate to what the mayor, uh, has already, uh, said to me in early statements, that, uh, that he would, uh, approve this as soon as the, the council acted on it, passed it, the council's acting on it, passed it, and we just waiting on the mayor to do, uh, what he do, and we just thank you for your leadership. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, that concludes our speakers, down to older new business, Councilor Skiles.
Thank you, Mr. President. As always, I wanna thank the citizens of District One, as well as the city of Birmingham, for permitting me the opportunity to be their voice. I would like to move at this time for unanimous consent, uh, for fire stations twenty-seven, twenty-eight, and thirty. An anonymous, uh, giver, uh, has generously offered, uh, to purchase, uh, two refrigerators and provide furniture, uh, and I move at this time that we accept these donations, uh, and that the property be put to use at the stations previously referenced. I so move.
Second.
Aye.
All opposed.
Move the item.
Second.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed.
Thank you, colleagues, I really appreciate that. Also, I do wanna say that we do have a neighborhood meeting tonight, which is Kilo Springs, they meet at Smith Middle School, which is on Five Mile Road. Pearly Lawhorn is the president, uh, there, and they meet at seven P.M. I wanna encourage members of the public to always get engaged, stay actively involved. I do see, uh, one of my, um, members of the community that is here, thank you for taking that, uh, where I say in the neighborhood meeting, the only way people know and respect your community and respect you is that you show up when the discussions are going on. So I really appreciate that. I also want to say to the general public, next week is election time. I always say, I never tell you who to vote for, but I do want you to go out and exercise not a privilege, but a right to vote. If you do not know where to go vote, uh, you need to call the Jefferson County Board of Registarians as soon as possible, that number is three-two-five-five-five-five-zero, that's three-two-five-five-five-five-zero. You need to have a state-issued ID. Some election, uh, places have been changed as a result from the city to, uh, state elections, but it's so, so important that you know where to go vote ahead of time. Encourage your neighbors to come out, again, that's next Tuesday, March one. Your vote is your voice. I do wanna again say thank you to our colleagues on behalf of the Governmental Affairs Committee, uh, today, that this will now give the council equal access to all resources to be able to fulfill our duties, which was passed today. And also, we want to thank the council on behalf of the committee, uh, for the budget, so that we can be able to serve our citizens to the highest degree, and with all their cares and concerns in mind, just like we approved six-point-five million dollars on last year, I look forward to the opportunity, Mr. President and Chair of Budgeted Finance and Committee members, as well as the council, that we continue to move forward with helping our community, improving the quality of life for the people in the community where we live. Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilor Lundey.
Thank you, leadership. The first week, um, I took office, we were inaugurated on October twenty-second of two thousand and thirteen. I was contacted by Flow Dynamics and Automation Incorporated. This gentleman has been trying to do, uh, a project, uh, for over two years now, and, um, the last time I was there, Mayor Bell was there, and this gentleman now, the owner of Flow Dynamics and Automation, uh, they have a, a business in the industrial park off of Arkadelphia, over behind the La Quinta. Um, he has gotten with all the business owners there, and is trying to, uh, move his project along. He's requesting that this project be put to the front of the project funding list. Uh, he's been waiting for action on this project for almost two years with no action. It simply just needs to be funded. This letter was sent to the mayor's office and copied to Jarvis Patton and Lisa Cooper. Uh, this gentleman has been presented with an opportunity to move outside of the city, uh, to, I think, um, Pale City. So I would hate for us to lose an employer, uh, for politics. I would hate to lose an employer for politics. Now, it's cool if, you know, folk don't like me, that's fine, but when it come to, when it comes to sales tax revenue, occupational tax revenue, business license fees, let's keep those at the forefront, and not whether who like Mar Lundey at the forefront.
That's right.
Okay? So Flow Dynamics is looking for an answer, the same answer they've been looking for for two years now. It is atrocious that we could lose a potential revenue generator over politics.
What, can I, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
They sent this to the mayor?
Yes.
And the mayor hadn't responded to it?
Uh, almost two years with no action, it simply just needs to be funded, unquote.
Par for the course? Mr. Patton, you gonna make sure the mayor knows about that?
Ms. Cooper, uh, do you have any information on that?
Good afternoon again, councilors. Uh, Randy Hydrick has sent an updated letter as it relates to the, his project. There's been several components when he first approached the city with regards to this, and just so you know, that the funding request for his project is on the bond list. It is part of one of those projects that the councilors are looking at as we speak. It involved the Water Works Board doing part of their due diligence and putting in piping, and if Andre Bittis was here, he could elaborate on that, but Mr. Hydrick is very well aware of the process. He was indeed, uh, being catered or recruited to move to Moody. The mayor made a personal phone call to him and asked him for his patience, and so that's where we are now. His project, I believe it's the Forty-first Street Improvement Project, is on the list for approval at this time.
Is that how we do business? Is that par for the course?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Well, when was I gonna find out, Mr. Patton?
I didn't know you were inquiring.
I was copying on the same email you was copying on.
I didn't know you were inquiring.
Well, shouldn't it just be a courtesy?
They don't believe in courteousness. It's evidence.
Yes, it's in my district, it's right off Arkadelphia Road, right behind the hotel over there, in the business park. I was at the meeting when the mayor was there.
Councilor Abbott.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Education Committee meeting is canceled for today. Our next meeting will be on Tuesday, March twenty-second, at two P.M. in Conference Rooms D and E. The, uh, this evening at five o'clock, the MPO, Metropolitan Planning Organization, will have its public involvement meeting. Uh, they will have it at the Regional Planning Commission offices at two North Twentieth Street, Suite Three Ten. On Thursday, it's kind of, I guess it's appropriate that this would be occurring, the Alzheimer's Association will have an open house for their new offices on Highland Avenue. Um, at twelve noon on Thursday, the Crime Stopper of the Year fundraiser luncheon is occurring at the Cohaba Grand Conference Center, and at six P.M., Thursday's a busy day, six P.M., the return of the bomber, um, is at the Southern Museum of Flight. Also, there is a fundraiser on Friday from seven to ten, A Taste of Avondale, and it will be held at so-so Trading Company, which is in the Old Mazers location. So if you wanna have a taste of Avondale, which is tasting pretty good lately, um, that will be Friday from seven to ten. The neighborhood meetings, the, uh, neighborhood meeting tonight was Redmont Park neighborhood, but they have canceled their neighborhood meeting, uh, because they did not have a lot on the agenda, and the weather is supposed to be bad. And next Tuesday, March first, Forest Park South, Avondale, we'll meet at six-thirty P.M. at the Avondale Library. Thank you very much, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman Hoyt.
Yes, um, I wanna ask if, um, Ms. Brittany, if she could pull up the EPA, uh, video that we had from last, uh, week's meeting, please.
Collegeville is on the move.
That was the message that resounded as elected officials joined community leaders to partner with state and federal agencies to learn more about what's needed to improve North Birmingham. The annual meeting, which is hosted by the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency, gives residents the opportunity to learn firsthand about the status of the work that is being done to improve the quality of life in their communities.
What we wanna do is make sure that the community stakeholders have a voice, uh, at the table, uh, and engaged in the conversation, uh, and dialogue at the beginning of the process and also throughout the process. So it gives, uh, the neighborhood, uh, community stakeholders an opportunity to engage with federal, uh, officials and, and also with, uh, other officials, so we can talk about other progress in the community.
That progress is something that all involved agree is a collaborative effort, from the residents all the way up to federal officials. It takes everyone working together to achieve the next steps, steps that in the long run will produce years of success for the North Birmingham community.
The opportunities, uh, that come out of communities coming together, working with the federal government, state level government, are incredible. Uh, I see the progress being made, I see new partnerships coming out of this, uh, I'm just excited to see that kind of energy.
The energy that's felt each time a collaboration of this kind takes place continues to expand and reach new levels as new agencies get involved. This year brought out not only new agencies, but new leadership that will in turn bring in new ideas.
One of the things I wanna do, because I'm new to the community, is be able to bring some resources to bear, take a closer look in terms of, uh, what we can do to, um, make those communities safe and, and clean, and quality of life to be good for the residents, uh, for a long term.
And as new ideas are brought to the table to help Collegeville, other communities are also learning how they can implement some of those same initiatives in their neighborhoods.
I actually live in the North Birmingham community, uh, community, I live on the west side, but I'm taking notes and thinking about things that I can take from North Birmingham and maybe apply in Bush Hills instantly in the western area. And I'm glad that Councilman Hoyt is here, because he's my counselor, so hopefully he and I can have some conversation about how can we replicate what Council Parker's doing in our community.
Councilman Hoyt echoed his residents' thoughts, noting that we must all look at ways that we can collectively advance Birmingham.
It's all to empower, uh, not only North Birmingham, but I mean, uh, Birmingham itself in general. I think, uh, you know, our young people, our, uh, adults, old adults, uh, old adults, uh, need to know that there are indicators that, uh, that leads to such devastation, and so when you see folk dumping stuff, you see people, uh, bringing something in from somewhere else in your community, you know, there's a, there's a hotline number that you need to call, and, and so you become proactive, uh, in terms of, uh, preserving your, your quality of life.
Through collaboration and education... Through collaboration and education, Collegeville is indeed on the move. And pretty soon, it will be the community setting the standards.
We are gaining so many people that's helping us until we're gonna be moving even faster than I thought.
For all the latest news and information, connect with our community or visit our website and subscribe to news updates.
Thank you. I did it for Councilor Parker.
Let me do this before.
Okay, go ahead, sir.
Uh, let's move to reconsider item thirty-nine.
Second.
No, by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed.
All right, the, the item thirty-nine is back before, so it needs to say an ordinance authorizing. Is that correct? Okay. We need to amend the language to say ordinance, not resolution.
Okay. So move.
Second.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed.
All right. Okay. Language is amended.
Who said no?
Robson. Robson.
Okay.
Um, all right, it'll be amended to say ordinance, not resolution.
We gotta vote on it as amended.
Vote on the item as amended.
Who's making the motion?
So move.
Second.
All, just do all in favor.
Lundey.
Lundey Skiles.
Yeah. Okay. Voting's open.
Okay. Mr. President. I got a question to the motion.
Yeah.
I need to clear it. This is an ordinance, correct? And it take unanimous consent for an ordinance to be?
It's permanent operation ordinance.
Okay, permanent operation ordinance to the thing. Okay, thank you. All right. All right, that item passes. Go ahead, Councilor Hoyt, I'm sorry.
Okay. Did I just throw my announcements away? Okay. Um, yes, uh, Mr. George McCall, the president of the Neighborhood Association, is submitting a new partial list of properties as of, um, February the eighteenth. And there are overgrown and burned and vacant houses that are, uh, requesting that the city clean up. And so, uh, we'll provide that list to you, Mr. Patton, so we can get that, uh, done by Mr., uh, Mr. McCall, for Mr. McCall. Okay? Uh, the other item is, uh, Bush Hills Neighborhood Association meets on Tuesday, February twenty-third. That would be tonight at six-thirty at Bush Hills Academy. The next Public Transportation Committee, Communication Committee meeting will be March the seventh. And that will be here in City Hall on third floor. The Enslie Bengals, Bengals, uh, youth football team will be having their first unity and, uh, walk entitled God's Walk against violence, which has been, uh, which will be held on February twenty-seventh. And that's at eight-thirty A.M. at Mac Alpine, uh, Recreation Center. And for information, you can call Ms., Mr. Vincent, uh, Presley. And his number is two oh five, seven oh zero, seven, zero, five, eight, five, nine, eight. And everyone is invited to participate in the walk. Mr. President, that's all of my, um, announcements.
Councilor Tyson?
Yes, can you show the firm enough Lockway? Brittany?
It's a site that many have longed to see for years. And now that wish has become a reality.
It's a blessing. It's a blessing to see all of this nasty, filthy stuff in our community to come down.
After nearly two decades of sitting idle and causing numerous problems for the community, the eyesore known as Lockway Gardens is no more. At the call of Councilor Sheila Tyson, who advocated for the demolition long before coming into office, the buildings have been demolished, making way for new opportunities in an area that has had to endure so much.
It might not mean nothing to some people, but it, it means so much to us because this is something that we worked on and we really wanted this to happen. And this right here show you, when you work with local government, you can move things in your neighborhood.
That sense of renewed hope was music to many residents' ears as they looked to see their neighborhood revitalized after being inundated with poverty and crime due to the blighted property. The site of the demolished building literally called for a celebration.
I'm glad they tear them down. I'm glad. And I'm, and I'm, I welcome the project they got, they got coming. And that's a good thing for the neighborhood. That's a good thing.
Six developers have already shown interest in the site for projects that include a gated senior citizen community that will be comprised of garden-style type homes. Councilor Tyson says other developers are also looking for additional investments in areas around Lockway Gardens. Details about both projects will be released in the coming months. But Councilor Tyson says one thing is for sure, Lockway Gardens is a thing of the past.
Now you listen to me. Four years from now, this is gonna be a crime area where they gonna have applications wait in fire cabins with a waiting list to move into.
The push to bring people back to live in Birmingham won't stop with Lockway Gardens as Birmingham city councilors are continuously working to revitalize neighborhoods by creating communities that people can be proud of.
If you don't have residents, you don't have a city. So we need to pay attention to these residential areas and make them wonderful places that people wanna live.
For all the latest news and information, connect with our community or visit our website and subscribe to news updates.
And a good thing that has happened with Lockway. And I wanna thank every one of the city council members for supporting the community and myself on this. And I would like to thank the mayor, Jarvis Patton, and all of their staff for working with us in order to get this accomplished. And that's what just tears me between when I have good ideas coming from the council members and you don't really know which side to go on when both of the ideas, that's really good. And I just appreciate it so much, uh, because this definitely will change the quality of life for the people over in the Woodland area and the western side of town. With the rebuilding of the Crossplex, you can look in the back of the Cross, Crossplex and see Lockway Gardens. It's just about a hundred feet over the, uh, ditch.
Ditch.
And you will see Lockway is right there at it. So there's no way for this, uh, area not to, uh, improve and citizens not to wanna move over there. On March the first, we have Mason City Neighborhood would be meeting at four-thirty at Henry Crump in the Recreation Center, Oakwood Place. March the first would be meeting at four, at, uh, Harrison Park at four P.M. There would be no P.I.C. meeting in March. We will resume in April, April the twelfth at two P.M., Conference Room A. Eighteen-wheelers are still driving, uh, down Green Springs Avenue. Even with, uh, Mr. Patton with the sign, no trucks, period, allowed. They are still flying down, uh, Green Springs. The citizens are, it's taking them a long time to get out their driveways. You only have two, uh, turnaround, uh, uh, driveways on Green Springs. These are, this is a senior citizen area. You only have two residents that's up under the age of fifty. And they are having bad problems getting out and accidents are still happening, uh, on the Green Springs, uh, on Green Springs Avenue. So I just wish we would actually take some time and look into that and get some police to monitor it every week or whatever we can do to actually assist the citizens there. It's a ditch need to be cleaned out. Twenty-two oh one, Twenty-first Street Southwest, behind this residence's house. The ditch is in very bad shape. Is, when it rain hard, it's actually, uh, flood, flooding into their back door. So if we can get something out there, uh, Mr. Patton, get someone out there to actually clean that ditch out. That's the end of my announcements.
Informed by legal, that the item is one of permanent operation.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, Ms. Clerk, does that require the action?
You gotta do, just like all the items, a permanent operation. First vote, UC. Second vote, pass or fail.
All right. Do we need to bring it up again?
Uh, I guess we just do the process over and don't get UC. We'll come back next week. However you do it. So we can, uh, reconsider.
Move to reconsider item thirty-nine?
Second.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
That's, okay.
Still voting no.
Okay. I need a motion on the item itself.
Okay. Um, you have a motion?
For a re, for UC.
For UC. So move.
Second.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
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 All opposed?
No.
Okay.
All right. It'll be back on the agenda next week. Go ahead. Thank you, Mr. President. Um, as Chair of Utilities Committee, I stepped out earlier to, uh, meet with Mr. Lupo uh, as it relates to the weather threats that we have, uh, coming forth this evening. Uh, I do wanna make sure that you're abreast at the, uh, uh, window of ten-thirty P.M. to one o'clock A.M. Uh, we're expecting very severe weather. Uh, the scale of increased weather that actually has increased in the past, uh, couple hours to hit, uh, this area of central Alabama. And so I, uh, uh, appreciate Mr. Lupo briefing me on that. Just wanna make sure, councilors, you all aware, uh, so that we look at that window for ten-thirty to one o'clock, uh, on tonight. So please be safe in regards to that situation. Uh, I wanna say happy birthday to my nephew, Tyson Aguilar. He was a citizen of District Six. He turned four years old and, uh, his birthday was on his past Sunday, so happy birthday to you, Tyson. Uh, had a great celebration at Mount Olive Missionary Baptist Church in Tarkland City for Pastor Jesse Young. Uh, his tenth anniversary, uh, was on this past Sunday. And we appreciate Pastor Young and First Lady Young for your service, uh, to Mount Olive Missionary Baptist Church. He also pastored seventeen years at, uh, Shady Grove in Moxmore Valley. So thank you for your service there. And I wanna congratulate, uh, now Bishop Michael Bender. Uh, he was installed at Faith Apostolic Ch- Church on his past Sunday. He's a new pastor at Faith Apostolic. Uh, congratulations to, uh, the Winona Lady Dragons, uh, with the Wind Over Columbia Eagles on Saturday. Uh, they were in Hansville. We have the Alabama High School Athletic Tournament taking place. Uh, they will now play, um, Ramsey on noon this Wednesday at Wallace-Hansville to see who makes it to the Class Five A Girls Final Four. Uh, good luck to my daughter. Uh, they play, actually the school in my district, John Carroll Catholic, on Wednesday morning at nine o'clock A.M. at Alabama State University. And, uh, good luck to her, her team as they move forward in the Central Regional Championship game on Wednesday. I might not, I might or might not be back for committee of the whole, uh, due to, uh, being in Montgomery on Wednesday. Uh, as it relates to neighborhood meetings, uh, Topper City Neighborhood meeting will take place at six o'clock P.M. at Los State Community College, uh, on today. Thank you, Mr. President. All right, um, where am I? I just got one. That's not it. Might have thrown away my announcements. Go ahead, Councilor Hoyt.
Yeah, well, um, just wanted to, um, wish my one and only a happy birthday. She'd be twenty-one, uh, on the twenty-seventh, so, um, time is flying and, and, uh, it looks like, uh, and matter of fact, she will be finishing, uh, completing her work, uh, as an undergrad, a semester ahead of time. So I'm very grateful for that and, you know, she's been on the dean's list since she's been in school. So I'm just really, uh, proud of my, and the strive that she's making, uh, as a student and as a, uh, a citizen of the world because, uh, she's quite involved in, uh, in Atlanta. Having worked for Congressman Lewis, uh, interned for him. Uh, have worked with, um, Fulton County DA, Assistant DA, I mean, with the DA office, uh, with, uh, Mr. Howard, Attorney Howard, and so she really is making a little way in, in Atlanta. And I said, wow. Uh, so, uh, I'm just real, mother and I are very proud of her. So, uh, that's what I wanna do. Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilor Skiles?
Yes, Mr. President. I wanted to, um, I'm actually sitting here trying to get my things together, so I apologize. But, uh, Mr. President, we need to announce about our Black History Program. Uh, central staff has come up with a great opportunity for students and us to be able to have a panel on this, uh, week. And if I'm incorrect, then Brittany, make sure the president has it. Uh, but I wanted to make sure, uh, Mr. President, that in addition to that, in closing, I do have, uh, some, uh, pending things for the mayor as well. And I had forgotten to do that, so I wanted to make sure for the record that I said this. Um, in the three-hundred block of Martin Drive, um, the citizen is complaining the fact that, uh, the police department and a traffic sign, uh, needs to be placed in that area because we got a lot of speeders along the three-hundred block of Martin Drive, which is in the Apple Valley community. Children are playing there and because of the fact there is no sign to indicate to the motorists, uh, when they're coming along that way, uh, that they have to basically slam on brakes, uh, once they realize they get to a particular area and the children are there. So the, we've already sent that over, but I wanted to reiterate that from the day. It's also code enforcement is being asked, uh, to cite on First Avenue North. It's actually in the Eastlake area. I've already talked with you about it, Mr. President. Uh, but that the business owners in that area, they have a historical code, city code, uh, in regards to the colors that the businesses can have and their businesses and so forth. So with that having said, those business owners, some of those have been violating, uh, the city code, historical code. And so I wanted to bring that to the attention of the mayor's office so that we can get some code enforcement, uh, enforcement, uh, along with working with Councilor Austin's office, uh, in, in that regard. So, Mr. President, that's what I had. And I thank you because you're very attentive to your residents. And so it was just a pleasure to be able to serve and help. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Um, the only announcement I have is just what you were talking about. The next Monday, we'll host a panel discussion entitled The Past, Present, and Future. Conversation about our past as we look to continue building on our future. Be moderated by, uh, Mr. Art Franklin, CBS forty-two. This event will be held on Monday, February twenty-ninth at six P.M. at Sixteenth Street Baptist Church.
Yeah, who's the panelists?
I don't have.
Oh, okay. You know, I could talk about that.
So, um.
Listen, can I give my little Black History moment?
Go ahead.
Well, um, for starters, um, my cousin, Dorothy Cowser Alexandra was the first African-American model for Coca-Cola. Uh, she's now retired educated administrator that lives in, uh, Ocalifor, uh, Florida. Um, my cousin now retired, uh, president emeritus, um, Dorothy Cowser Yancy. Dr. Yancy was the first African-American tenure professor at Georgia Tech. And, um, and she's the president emeritus at Johnson C. Smith University in North Carolina and Shaw University. Matter of fact, her daughter works for, um, Mayor Reed in Atlanta as his, uh, Commissioner of Human Resources, uh, Yvonne Cowser. And, uh, my cousin, Selwyn, Selwyn Vickers, Dr. Vickers, who is the, um, the dean of, um, UAB Medical School, the first African-American dean of medical school and the senior vice president of that institution. Uh, that's just one of my, uh, Black History moments. Uh, I wanted to share that with the, with the audience. And I have many others, uh, but, uh, that's ones that come to mind right now. And I know Councilor Robson got plenty with the civil rights movement in Collegeville. And I just want you to know my grandfather, Pastor Trinity, CME Church in Collegeville. So chances are, he knew your grandfather because they were ministering. And it was the last church he pastored in Alabama was Trinity, um, uh, Baptist Church. And of course, his son goes on to become bishop. Yeah. So, uh, I just wanna share that little moment. Thank you.
All right. I wanna thank Officer Lewis and Officer Shelby for providing our security today. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So move. Second.
Aye. This meeting is adjourned.